Who we missing?
Yep, just Richard, I think. There we go.
Go on.
Okay. Somebody say something, I'm trying to do a microphone check.
Hello Jeff, how you doing?
There you go, okay, thank you. Thank you, alright, so. Call to order, the.
Jeff, you just disappeared.
You just muted.
You hit mute.
How's that? Called to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of, what is it, June 21st? Two thousand and twenty-one, the meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Appreciate everyone's patience. Planning Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. Recording Secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Okay. Recall the role, please Kathleen.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Wile?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
You have a court.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John.
I would like to make an emotion to approve the agenda as staff recommend. With item four B continued to seven nineteen twenty-one. Item four A continued to seven nineteen twenty-one, and I'd like to move five C, five D, and five E after four D. Those are the Horizon application.
Right, I was going to, okay, that's your motion, I was gonna suggest moving four C and four D before five C and taking five A and B first, but whatever, what do you think?
I think we ought to get rid of these, we've had, we've continued them two meetings already. We're having to cut down too many trees to keep keep them on the staff.
Let me see, Trevor's got his hand up, let me see what's going on here.
Chair Jennings, Gil Karish, our wireless expert has had, when we continued this item this week, she had a previous commitment with another city council, so she won't be available till later tonight, so be the recommendation of staff to move the other items up, then here the wireless items, so that she'd be able to be there as a resource for you during those items.
He would be there, so move, move them to the end, right, and Richard, what, you have your hand up, Richard, what?
And I wanted to jump in because I wanted to give the commission the option. On item four B, the Sea View Hotel. If for some reason tonight, if we needed more time to hear the items, so that they, these items don't back up to a future meeting. We had looked at doing a special meeting on the night of June thirtieth, next Wednesday. And if the commission would like, so that they don't have to have a larger agenda on the nineteenth. You know, if we could, we'll try to get you if you like the report for the Sea View Hotel on the June thirtieth, if you'd like to continue it to that date rather than the nineteenth.
That would be wonderful personally.
I would, I, I would like to comment, this is the Sea View Motel, Hotel Norm's thing?
Yeah, yes.
Well, the council eighteen months ago told us to be expedited. And now we're into July.
I think.
I, I think we need to, we need to expedite.
Yeah.
I, I think that that's what Richard is saying, isn't he?
Talking about the thirtieth instead of the.
Well, haven't we set the special meeting, let's, look. I thought I had it on my calendar, but maybe.
A week from tomorrow.
Yeah.
This Wednesday, as what staff informed me, they were looking, staff told me June thirtieth, and I can get him on the phone and confirm that.
That's right.
So I just think that, you know, with the, with the council telling us to do this, and it's been, we're pushing two years. We should do it.
Right, so I'm, I'm, okay, so we have a meeting, a special meeting on the thirtieth, and that was there, as I understood it from staff, was to handle any overflow that we might have tonight, including four B, including Norm's hotel. Is that not correct, Richard?
Yes, we, so, if I understand you correctly, yes, we can, if the, the council, if the commission wishes tonight, instead of July nineteenth, we can move it to June thirty.
Four B. Yes. I amend my motion to that, on the wireless items. I don't think we're gonna get to them tonight if we put them last, so I would like to have Richard inform us when the expert is here, and we can reorder the agenda, because you know, this will be the third or fourth time it's moved.
Right, but I think it is important to have to have our legal staff present to help us out on that thing, because it's boiling down to legal arguments, so, so let me suggest this, John, I'm, I'll I'll go with you, remove four B to the thirtieth, and move four C and four D to after five B, but if the council becomes available, we can then reorder the reorder, we can reorder it, is that satisfactory to you?
Yeah, Richard, will you know when they become available?
Trevor, Gil can text us, correct?
Yeah, Richard, I will inform you if, if we hear that she's present in the meeting, she's supposed to give us a heads up when she's when she's gonna be available.
Okay, so on that basis, I'll second the motion, is there further discussion on it? Let's call the roll Kathleen.
Chair Jennings, was, uh, it was to move item, the, the two wireless items, four C and four D, was that to be heard after item five B now, is that the, the motion?
Yeah, or I said it before five C, but it makes sense.
There's a five C, right, isn't that a wireless?
I said, I said before five C.
Yep.
Or after five B, if you prefer it that way.
You got, you got it right, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify when you were there.
Okay.
Whatever.
Okay.
Whatever. Whatever you said.
Can you call the roll, please Kathleen?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you, that concludes page one, we're now at item two A, written in oral communications from the public, are there any speakers Kathleen?
Oh, excuse me Chair, I believe I need to make.
Uh, report on the posting of the agenda, right, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay, the agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, with the amended agenda posted on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, now we're at item two A, written in oral communications from the public, anything from the public Kathleen? Any speakers?
Yes, we have two speakers, Norman Haney and Lloyd Ahern.
Okay, would you open them up? Who we got, Norm?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, now, yeah.
Okay, good. What, what we witnessed tonight is a long history of continuation of the hotel project. And I wanna I want to explain why. Section three point eight. Subsection five. Five F in Malibu's LIP specifies three specific ways that the benefits package can be determined if your project has a floor area ratio in excess of fifteen percent. These three different alternatives are very specific. And I advised the previous director of planning about the one that I thought applied the most. She took all the information. But then she ignored it. And she went to the city council to determine a benefits package ignoring the provisions in the LIP. Director Malika refused to do that. He demanded that the code be followed. But he didn't have all of the information that was necessary to make a recommendation to the planning commission. We worked very hard, but we didn't get it done in time. Director Malika is not responsible for this delay. But the previous director is. So I hope we can get this project up as quickly as possible. If it were approved, then every delay costs the city through the transient occupancy tax three thousand five hundred dollars. If it's delayed for thirty days. My estimate is that the city loses a hundred thousand. And it's been going that way for the past two years. So I I I am supported of Director Malika, I think he works really hard, I appreciate all of your time, thank you for listening. If there's a special meeting possible to hear this project and others. I hope you support it, thank you very much.
Good, Norm. Lloyd?
Those are my comments.
Thank you, Norm. Lloyd?
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
Okay, thank you, good evening, planning commissioners, my name is
Okay, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Lloyd Ahern. I'm the president of the Law Student homeowners association. And I want to speak about a, a agenda item that's been pulled for tonight, four A, which is one eight eight six eight PCH, and it's gonna come up on the July nineteenth meeting. And where we had problems in the past, all the way back to February, was the story polls. Now, they're coming back with new plans. And what we would like, and the neighbors have been asking because they thought it was gonna be tonight, and I had to tell them it got postponed, and they said they understood. What I would like is to work with Richard and work with the developer and work with the surveyor, because the surveyor, the last surveyor's thing was from someplace way up north in Cali, northern California. It was unbelievable. Nobody we'd ever heard of. Uh, we wanna, we wanna see the story polls be put in for a day. If they want that, the safety thing, we'll do it. I'll work the low tide out with the community, with Richard. And before the nineteenth, of July nineteenth, I wanna see. Uh, the story polls put up with everybody standing there, like we did the last time, which was very unifying and very good for the city as far as the citizens appreciating you guys. That was huge. Because we're, on the east end of town, everybody thinks we're forgotten, and you guys all showed up, and it was very impressive. So I just wanna work with Richard and this commission that before the nineteenth, there are no. There's no questions. We know what we're doing on the nineteenth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd. Anybody else?
Nope, that was just the two.
Okay, fine. That takes us to commissioner comments and staff comments, commissioners. Um, and Craig?
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody. I have a couple of comments. First, there was the web fire on Friday afternoon in Legacy Park. I was driving along the highway. There were a hundred cars before me that must have seen the fire. I was the first one to call it in. Um, two points about that. One, if you see something, say something. I think too many people think somebody else is gonna deal with it. And number two, it seems like we've had another fire every week or two for a long time, sometimes started by homeless. And I just wonder, and I hope we're not getting some kind of fire watch fatigue, because this one. The fire department called it a quarter acre in the end, right in our, the city's Central Park. And yet there was no mention of it online in any of the social media or in the newspapers, and it's just like, oh, just another fire. So with fire season getting more intense, let's be more on guard. Secondly. I just wonder if there is any way we can get to a more universal examination of these wireless applications. We've got dozens of them coming. We're now spending a considerable chunk of each meeting addressing Verizon's desires, and I'd call them plans, but we haven't seen any actual plan for the city. And this, in the aggregate, this is taking a ton of commission and staff time, which would be better spent on rebuilds and such. So. And, and it strikes me as sort of inconsistent by analogy that the MRCA could do an EIR for ten or a dozen completely unique projects in Malibu and call it a single project. And similarly, Waterworks EIR calls a dozen very unrelated subprojects a single project. But, and this is infrastructure too, yet there's no way that we've figured out how to aggregate these things. Now, I, I think it's pretty simple. They're mostly just streetlights or poles with or without battery. And. I, this is probably not a question of what's permissible by law and more about being good neighbors. A political matter for council and the city manager to get together with Verizon and whatever companies and say, is there some way that we can package these and aggregate them, so we can, we don't have to be piecemealing them one by one by one by one? And I don't know what that would look like, but if we could, for example, break it into, as a first cut, those that were filed prior to the ordinance coming into effect, so we could look at all the old ones in a bunch, and then look at the new ones in a separate bunch, and then we'd know we have different law applying to them. We could look at them by geographical area or look at the ones that are on streetlights, and then separately look at the ones on utility poles, or some way to group them in some way, so we can look at a bunch of them at a time and not just be going, you know, the way with, I mean, the way, at the rate we're going, half of our meeting for the next year is gonna be about Verizon polls. So let's figure out a, a more political solution on that. And in terms of more organized things, I think along the lines of that, it would be nice to have a report on backup battery requirements, speaking generally about these things. We heard last time that they, they maybe had an hour or two of backup, and I was thinking that some of these need days worth of backup, and it might be nice to figure out which ones at what part of the city do need to have backup for days, and which are fine if they go down after an hour. Um, we don't have any context on that. Finally. A few of the de minimis consent items have almost zero info about the project. They're almost entirely just the boilerplate of what you need to file for a, a OWTS. And it, to me, it would help if we had more sense of what the project is. And I wonder if there is some way that we, we could copy and paste the material elements out of each application into the first half a page of the application. So at a glance, you could look and see, oh, yeah, this one is obviously gonna pass. Uh, or this one seems sort of borderline, maybe I better read it more deeply. I don't know, maybe that's asking too much, but it just seems like there's a lot of boilerplate every week, every other week. Um, so that's that, thank you.
Okay, other comments, John?
I, I second what Craig says. The main problem I'm having, I've been doing this a long time, and I like to be thorough. And week after week, I get a couple thousand pages, nine or ten. Blueprints to go over. And I barely have time to get them done in a week, barely. And quite frankly, today I gotta answer to some of my questions at three, three o'clock. Uh, and it's kind of complicated. I don't feel prepared for that. So I think we, we have to do something, because. I don't feel I'm doing my job. I'm not. I have, you know, eleven pages of notes today. I probably should have twenty. There's so, and I have probably not looked at every page of every plan. So hopefully, we can do something like Craig, as I understand, we have a hundred and ninety polls coming at us. That's a lot, and it's a lot of staff time, and we're shortly, I guess, gonna run out of our. Time prior to December twentieth, two thousand twenty, where we're gonna be not able to continue these. And so we're gonna have to put all the other items last. And so we're gonna back up on all of those. The other thing I would like, and I know the city council put it off for another month. But we need to get in front of the public, and we need to get back in city hall. We need to be able to go talk to the planners. It's not, in my opinion, it's not adequate to send an email and four days later, get it four hours before the meeting. We have to be able to go in and talk to them, or at least. Get them on the phone. So I think we need structural reform, and if we don't do it by the end of the year. All of us are gonna be working thirty hours a week and not getting it done. Thanks.
David, you had your hand up?
Uh, I concur with most of what John and Craig just had to say. I mean, the, the system is broken. I, I mean, it's unrealistic to assume the five of us are gonna read and comprehend and adequately comment on a thousand pages of technical reports each week. And we continue on the Murphy Way project, which is complicated enough. We just got a nine-page letter from MRCA that came in, to me at least, at four thirty or five o'clock this afternoon. I, I'd like to have some type of policy that nothing gets sent to us after noon on the day of the meeting or something like that, because it's absurd to think that we're gonna be able to do that repeatedly, but we're asked to. Uh, but the main thing, I, I had two other points to mention. One, I wanted to follow up with Trevor to see how the talks were going that you mentioned at our last meeting regarding the replacement fence at the Carbon. La Costa Beach area where the fence had been taken down. And then, secondly, I'll just put the other point out there, and you can address them any way you want. Um, I know it's not our purview, but. Pacific Coast Highway has become impassable even more on weekends than it has been previously and during the week. Obviously, we can't do anything, well, we can't do enough to prevent accidents from happening. But what I'm now seeing at like this afternoon and one of the weekend days this weekend is when there are blinking traffic lights, blinking red in front of Nobu or blinking red in front of Malibu Pier in the morning, that start backing up traffic, they don't get fixed. If it's, if it's at nine or ten in the morning, it's still going at three or four in the afternoon. And I don't know who or what needs to be. Contact, how we get that done in a way where we can actually ameliorate the problem while it's going on, but right now it's not happening.
Okay.
Trevor, if you have a response to the.
Well, let, let's go in order here. John, you've, you've spoken. Dennis, you have your hand up?
I, on the plans, Commissioner Hill, you mean the standard plan, so you'd rather see something different or? But anyway, I got it. It's, it's a lot. The de minimis waivers, I'm, you know, I said it before, I don't wanna talk about septic tanks.
Yeah.
Too much time, too much about nothing. These guys wanna buy a bigger tank, let them. They're gonna spend the money. It's a better, more efficient system, whatever they wanna do. And. I guess that's it. That's all I think really. I was cruising along in happy mode, and then I thought I better say something after that, but I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. John?
I just wanted to comment on something else. I, I get calls when something goes wrong. I'm sure all the city council will get them, and you guys probably all get them, but. Uh, we need more transparency as far as. Event permits in Malibu. This weekend, there was an, an event with no permit at a city-owned shopping center, and I must have had twenty calls. Uh, what's going on? What's going on? I have no way to know what it is. And if the public. Got some kind of list of what was permitted, that's unusual. We wouldn't, we could have someplace to at least refer them to, but, but I can't tell anybody why there's a concert at some building, and they didn't know about it, and they're stuck in traffic or whatever. So I hope we get a little more transparency on that. And I'm sure that comes not from the planning department probably, but probably from the city manager. Or. There's a website page, or there's an alert or something, because it seems like every. Everybody wants to have an event. Every weekend in the summer. The other thing I, I think we should be concerned about is the biggest problem in. Malibu has always been parking. As we can tell by Nobu. And we now have a lot less parking than we had before COVID. Restaurants have expanded seating. They can now go inside. Now they can stay outside, and they're. Staying outside in the parking lots. So it's something we need to resolve, because all that traffic's gonna go onto the highway. If they can't find a place to park. So hopefully, the city council can do something about that.
Okay. All right, staff?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a few quick announcements for the group. Uh, what I'd like to let everyone know is that this week, we have set up our public counter. We do ask that folks give us a call when they wanna come in, because we're in a point of transitioning from still accepting a lot of things digitally to starting to accept things in person again. Uh, so if someone would like to come in, it would be best to call the department ahead of time. However, we are serving folks that do walk up to our doors, so we're doing our best to accommodate everyone. And our counter hours, so that the public knows, are from nine until twelve, and then again, from one until three. In the afternoon, so we can take in projects in person. Also, want to mention too, that that, hopefully, we can expand on that, starting next week a bit more, and just continue to kind of ramp up to where we were prior to COVID. And I just wanna mention too, that that is the planning department's hours. Folks should check with building and safety or public works for their counter hours. I, I'm sorry, I don't have that information. I also wanna mention that tonight, there was some concern on the project for the Old Christie's Restaurant. And I'm sorry, I don't have the item number right in front of me. There was. Five D?
B.
B is four. Okay, five, five B. There was some concern of the, one of the commissioners raised about the public notice. Whether or not it was deficient, and on that notice, the project description was correct. Showed or just demonstrated that this involved multiple properties. I was able to confirm that the mailer that went out, went out correctly to properties within the, the required radius from both parcels. And it was simply in the address line of the public mailer. It only listed one of the addresses. And on that one, you know, it's a legislative item. We wouldn't be denying anybody the right to appeal this. It's something that is gonna be recommended to the city council based on what happens this evening. There was also a request made by a member of the public for a translator that could translate Spanish to English. We explained that the, the burden of that would fall on the, the folks that need to speak here. And Trevor, perhaps you can join in if I'm missing something on this. So I wanted to make the commission aware of all of these. Items that are around five B. However, given that it wasn't, you know, that the notice was mailed to everybody, and plenty of time was allotted to the folks that would like to speak. Uh, the planning commission tonight can hear the item, should you wish to continue down that path. I wanted to make sure those questions were answered before we get to the item. And the last thing is, yes, this weekend, there were a couple of events around the city that took place. Uh, we will, we could do perhaps a better job of making the event permits a bit more obvious for everybody. They, we do publish a list of event permits. I can talk to staff. Perhaps there's a way we can make that a little bit easier on the navigation end of things from the city website. And, but the event that took place at the Mount Lumberyard, I can tell you, we did, uh, did not have a permit that I'm aware of. I couldn't find one, so we did follow up with the management company. Um, and that will be recorded as one of their events for this year, so it's not that they're going to get a freebie on that. So there was follow-up on that. I'm available for any questions if there are any, but thank you very much.
Yes, Trevor?
Um, and I believe a citation was issued as well on that, Richard. Commissioner Wile, you required about La Costa, and the city has been in contact with both Caltrans and MRCA, and is trying to find a resolution to that situation. It's a tricky situation, because the city is not a property owner in that location. And there, um, we've been ongoing contact there, and we are also still awaiting some materials that have been produced to us that we were expecting to have. So the city is pushing as fast as we can to find a resolution on there, but it is, our powers are limited, since we do not own that property where the, um, the fence was illegally removed. Um, and finally, as Richard mentioned about the translation issue, if they need extra time for translation, or if they wanna use their phone for translation, or if there's any staff that can assist with that, you know, the suggestion would be that extra time be provided to allow for that.
Okay, John?
Uh, Richard, on the lumberyard permit, they announced. About five of these concerts on, uh, weekly, when they announced that one. Have those been approved, or they have to wait the twenty-five days and get a TUP?
They, those have not been approved. They don't, I could not find any evidence of any pending permits this morning when I looked. So they will need to get a temporary use permit for those, and it is a, there is a public noticing period there of thirty-two days before the event. So we, like I said, we are following up with them, but if, if you could forward me that link, I'd appreciate it, because, or maybe I really missed it when I looked this morning. I only found, it said no upcoming events, but definitely, if there are some, I'd wanna make sure we know about that, so that when code enforcement is in contact with them again, we can be certain to address those and try to stop this before it happens.
And then, last question, has the. Car club problem been solved? In the village?
I wouldn't call it solved. It, they have been moving around on us. We are doing our best to. One, anybody who promotes it, we've been going after them to remove it from their website. I know that Doug sends, sees his letters out to anybody who's promoting it. So we're still targeting it and still trying to work on some sort of solution.
Thank you.
Great. Um, Richard, on on five B, you noted that the. I I'm the one who noticed that the noticing was incomplete, that it didn't have the other address, and so I just asked, how relevant is that? You said it was, we don't necessarily have to care too much about that. I'm paraphrasing because it's a legislative item, but only part of it is legislative. And I guess my question is. Um, the people who would have gotten noticed and didn't. Would be all the people who live on the second parcel, the motor home, uh, the mobile home park, excuse me. And so I'm wondering, the notice radius, did that capture most of those people already or all of them? Or only a small minority of them have been notified that otherwise would have been notified?
Let me get Adrian to jump in here because I had him look at that notice.
Just trying to get a sense of how material it is.
Yeah, so the five hundred foot radius map actually included both properties. So it included everyone within the mobile home park and then everyone within five hundred feet of the park, so that everyone who was. Uh, supposed to get a notice, did get a notice, uh, like, like Richard said. The only issue was that the notice itself. Had that error. Uh, and that's because the information is directly taken from the database. Uh, and so these things tend to happen from time to time. We try to catch it, but. We missed it this time.
Makes me happy to hear that that sounds like it wasn't material and that we can look at the substance. Thanks.
A question, Adrian, uh, since the mobile home park has three hundred coaches. Was it five hundred feet from? That like, for example, Heather Cliff and, uh, Wanda Mir got noticed also?
So it was based on the property boundary, so, um, there's an actual parcel. That is, um, you know, encompasses the property boundary. So everyone that lives or that has a. Uh, an APN or a mailing information within that parcel got noticed. And then the five hundred foot radius was taken from that property boundary.
So this is an existing parcel?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Um, have that, no more comments or questions from, uh. Commission and staff, let's go to the consent calendar. Uh, are there any items the commissioners wish to pull from the consent calendar? Yes, Greg?
Uh, for questions, I'd like to pull three B two and three B four.
Um. Two. And three before, okay, um. Let's go with three B two. Do you need, you just have a question you want to ask?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification because this was specified as a like-for-like plus ten percent. But when you look at it, beyond that, it also includes a guest house and a carport, so it's clearly more than the ten percent. Um, but none of that was mentioned in the review comments, so, you know, I don't have a clear sense of, is this relevant or important, but it's not what it's representing itself as.
Trevor?
Yeah, before we call this item, I I don't, if, uh, the rest of the items, there's no objection if you want to, uh, receive and file them before we move on to this item.
I was gonna do it after we got rid of these, but yeah, we can, the others are received and filed, and that would be three B one, three B three. Three B five, six, and seven. And three B eight. Are received and filed. Go ahead now.
Could I repeat that or it's?
I. I, 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 I was waiting for Richard to have a response, so.
Yeah, good.
It's my understanding from this one and. I'd be more than glad to do more digging on this. Uh, but. They, what they're putting in, the system they're putting in. Is to serve what the property was developed with prior to the fire. And. From what I could see, and I I, like I said, I could double check this if, uh, Commissioner Hill would like. Uh, but on these plans here. And from what staffs, you know, showing that the both the the guest house and single family dwelling. Were replacement, uh, were replacements of what was there prior to the fire. Uh, so this would not result in an expansion or serving a new use. Uh, this would just serve structures that were damaged by fire because a planning verification, one verification. Would cover all structures on the property, both a main residence and secondary or guest house units.
Okay, there there were no review comments, so that wasn't clear. We can move to the next one if other people don't have a comment.
I don't hear any. Let's go.
A similar question on three before, um, it's spec'd at less than ten percent, but then it's an additional six hundred square foot attached garage and a seven hundred square foot basement. Grading, another ninety-six square foot addition. On three different APRs, it kind of looks like piecemealing. So the question is, how much does any of that, uh, as, uh, as a matter of process or procedure affect just? Looking at the OWTS. Do we, do we need more detail on that, or can we just go, yeah, fine, if it is piecemealing, then we deal with that later?
So for the purposes of the wastewater system. It is a waste, th- this system once again meets the the requirements of the code, which is that it's going to be serving. A structure that was destroyed by a fire. And yes, uh, th- these folks, there is the, um. The ten percent, um, you know, replacement of the two-story structure. And it's my understanding that this was processed as an APR. Versus a planning verification. Because a portion of that ten percent replacement. Uh, was above, uh, eighteen feet in height, uh, because it's a two-story house, so because of that. Uh, we wanted to make sure we noticed the neighbors, which would not have happened with the planning verification. And then, yes, these folks are adding a basement. And then, uh, that extra ninety-six square feet, of course, is because they're over to the main house, they're over the ten percent. Uh, but overall, it does meet the code. We just wanted to make certain that we were. Putting in there just every application that was pending on that property or that had been approved, uh, so the commission was aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further questions, then three B two and three B four will be received and filed. Um, that takes us to item. Five A. I believe. Uh, this is, uh, the project on Murphy Way, six two nine five Murphy Way. We get a staff report, please?
Evening, Chair, Janines and members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to ask to. The presentation is shown. Thank you. So next slide, please. The subject parcel is an approximate five acre rectangular shaped lot located in a residentially developed area. The parcel and surrounding properties are zoned RR two and are developed with residential uses with accessory development. Next slide. The parcel is currently developed with a five thousand sixty-two square foot unpermitted equestrian facility and associated unpermitted grading. A code violation case was opened in two thousand eight. The property was subsequently sold to the current property owner in two thousand fourteen. The subject CDP application was submitted to the code violation. Next slide. The project involves, after the fact approval of unpermitted grading and the demolition of unpermitted structures and a new equestrian facility for personal use. Non-commercial equestrian development and the raising of horses is a permitted use in the RR two zoning district. Subject to development standards of the municipal code and the LIP. The applicant intends to use the riding ring and stables for personal training only. Next slide. This slide shows a comparison of the existing and proposed development. The larger stable in the photograph to be demolished is in the center of the proposed riding ring location. And the smaller structure to the left would be demolished. No development is proposed west of the smaller structure. The project complies with the two acre development, um, area required. Next slide. The project involves construction of a new equestrian facility comprising three buildings totaling eight thousand one hundred and forty-four square feet of barn and stables as shown in the floor plans. Building A is two stories and buildings B and C are one story. Next slide. The riding ring itself comprises a moisture control system to maintain the firmness of the. Surface area to reduce injuries to the horses. The applicant provided a link to a video that was distributed in a supplemental agenda report that shows the construction process for the riding ring. This involves the placement of sand and fibers, a watering system, and a plastic liner. The plastic liner is impermeable based on public works department assessment. However, in determining that the riding ring complies with the impermeable coverage or requirements. The planning department compares the riding ring to a green roof or a planter, which does have the capacity to absorb rainwater in a typical, uh, rainfall event. Any additional rainwater would be conveyed to the drainage system and onsite storage tanks. And the applicant is required to comply with water quality management. Plan, um, which would require that any runoff is treated. Next slide. The project involves nine thousand nine hundred and ten cubic yards of grading, including after the fact grading. Grading calculations for the project is based on nineteen ninety-four topography, which was before the unpermitted grading took place. To capture the grading quantities resulting from the unpermitted grading. Um, this is depicted as a red dash line in the cross section, the the shown here. Actual project grading involves nine thousand sixty-four cubic yards of total grading. And the majority of the grading is for the proposed thirty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-six square foot equestrian riding ring. Which is categorized as exempt understructure grading. Um, because the writing ring is considered a structure pursuant to the LIP similar to a swimming pool. Next slide. This is the grading, um, calculations that are based on the topography before the site was graded. Next slide. The project includes a variance for a proposed twelve foot high retaining wall. The wall height would be vis- visible from the inside of the riding ring with one foot of freeboard exposed from the outside of the riding ring. And the retaining wall would be placed in an area of proposed cut and would be one foot above existing grade. Next slide. Development is proposed on slopes deeper than three to one, which requires a site plan review. The areas shown in orange in the color coded slope analysis indicate the locations of these slopes. These areas have been previously disturbed when the site was graded without permits and do not represent the natural land flow. Next slide. The application includes a site plan review for construction in excess of eighteen feet in height with a total height of twenty-eight feet for a pitched roof. The minimized visual impacts maximum allowable building heights are based on historic grade when historic grade is lower. And existing grade when existing grade is lower so that the project doesn't benefit from the unpermitted grading. Next slide. As shown in the project rendering and storied pole photos, the buildings are stepped into the hillside to minimize visual impacts. Next slide. And I have one correction to note for the resolution. There's an error in section five condition two of the resolution, um, which is the project description. And the text crossed out in red, which states exceeding one thousand cubic yards should be struck out. Next slide. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-three to approve the project as revised. And I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lily. Um, disclosures, please, uh, Dennis?
I went out and met with Alan and the architect, uh, walked the site. Uh, in my little mind, I was thinking how nice it'd be to do all that grading, but, um. It's a very nice facility. It'll be really nice to have and and whoever gets to use it, it'll be, uh. It'll be very nice of it. I think it's a good looking buildings and the way that they got things set up and the drain system that's got to go in underneath the the writing underneath the the. Pin itself is, uh, pretty elaborate, so, uh, should be, should be a good thing.
Uh, David?
Uh, same thing, visited the site, met with the project manager and the architect, walked around, uh. Had a discussion, but didn't, uh, cover anything that isn't already in the report.
Greg?
Uh, yeah, I looked at the site from the existing driveway on the north side. I saw it from the south side when we looked at the the other house a couple of years ago. I drove up on Canaan and noticed that from a distance it does block blue water view. Um, I looked on Google Earth to double check the terrain since I hadn't been actually on it lately. Um, and. Uh, I didn't arrange for a formal visit because I submitted a number of questions last Monday. And I thought I'd get answers to those and then I'd be able to go and and they didn't actually come until two thirty today, so. Um, I also, on the basis of hearing that the daughter is a world-class equestrian, I. Confirmed that she's a professional. I just looked Google for a minute and saw that she just won twenty-five thousand dollars last month in Capistano, so congratulations.
Don?
I did not visit the site. I'm very familiar with that area. I, um. Was a little surprised that it didn't have a trail on it since I. Pealed a couple of projects because of the trail. And in the past, there was a trail. I s- I also sent questions to Lily. I got them around. I discovered them around three o'clock. They're dated two thirty-one. Um, the answers to those. Are consistent with what's in the staff report, even though some of them in my mind. Seem a little strange. But they are disclosed.
Uh, I visited the site Friday, met with the project manager, walked the site, got a, uh. It was better to to get a visual, uh, and a. What am I trying to say? The the layout of the of the retaining wall became clearer to me than it was by just looking at the plans, but apart from that, there was nothing that wasn't in the staff report. All right, do you have questions of staff or do we want to go directly to the public hearing? Anybody have questions for staff? Yes, David?
Uh, my question relates again to the. Letter that we all received from MRCA this afternoon. I, does staff have any response to what is in that letter? I did not have time to go through it in great detail.
I I received it, um, during the hearing tonight and I'm I'm skimming it now. Let's see, uh, the. But I think a lot of what is in the staff report still stands. The CDP is intended to. Abate the code violation for unpermitted grading and, um, and the structures which will be demolished and, um. As far as public easements, the butts terrace trail is is not a. It's not a map trail on the LCP Parkland's map and it's not a developed trail. That said, the. Development of the, um. Of the project would not preclude access and the project does propose a driveway off of Murphy Way. And, um, and a required retain wall because there's a slope there, but, um, the the existing slope in that area would preclude, um. A trail in in that area regardless, um.
But if if you didn't receive the letter until late this afternoon either, it's not fair to put you on the spot anymore than it is to put us on the spot, so. I I I don't, you don't need to respond as you're reading it now. I think that's unfair.
Yes, Greg?
Yeah, I'll just say, I I didn't get the letter. I last checked email sometime after six PM and I I didn't have a letter from MRCA. Uh, also, I I, my question is. I don't understand why we're even looking at this because you said it's it's for training. And in RR two, in RR zones expressly not permitted is quote, equestrian riding and training facilities and activities. So. Uh, how 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 do we get around that? Or how are you getting?
Training for personal use is permitted in the RR two zone. It's this. The intent of this project is not for commercial use or boarding or training learning.
Where does it, where does it say that? Because I'm I'm reading from the LIP and it says not permitted equestrian riding and training facilities and activities. Doesn't say anything about personal or not.
Um, raising. Raising of horses and other equine cattle, sheep and goats, including the breeding and training of such animals. Is in the, um. Appendix ones would be permitted uses.
Correct, but not training facilities and activities. You can, you can, it's. I it, I mean, I I guess there's some vagueness around the margin, but this seems pretty clearly to fall into the latter category. Which is elaborated with the word including and then a paragraph of the sorts of things that would qualify. which is elaborated with the word "including," and then a paragraph of the sorts of things that would qualify as, uh, "training facilities and activities." And among them are listed riding rings, boarding, training, show facilities, barns, et cetera, so.
Okay, th- th- this is one of the problems we sometimes get into where questions segue into debate. And, uh, if you have questions, questions are fine, debates not. Uh, Trevor?
Well, I just wondered where they were basing that, and I, and I guess I got a sense that they're looking at that other section, which then, then there is a debate.
All right, Trevor?
Uh, sure, guys, I was gonna echo your sentiment. I, I just was gonna say, the applicant may want to have an opportunity to address that issue, and it may be a, a question for interpretation for the planning commission, but let's see all the evidence before us, and we can continue that further when, uh, we come back to, um, deliberation.
John?
Uh, tell me if I can't answer this, ask this question, but this is for personal use, as I understand what Lily said. And what I'm wondering is, if it's personal use, I would assume the person who's riding the horse is the person. So why do you need a lounge, uh, and an observation deck?
I think I would let the, the applicant respond to that question. There's, there's something in the code that, that precludes having areas for, for the property owner and applicants to, to relax on the, on the project site, but I would like to defer that question to them.
Okay, let's, let's open the public hearing. Let's see what we can get out of the applicant. Um, Kathleen, do you have an applicant team?
We have Lynn He Cox, and there's Alexi Glass, which I'm not certain is affiliated with Lynn. Perhaps, uh, Lynn can, uh, inform us when he begins to speak. Other than that, we have members of the public, Stephen Gordon, Kevin Sullivan, Da- David Pasquale, and Gaspar Obando, Obando.
Okay, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alan Lieberman as well.
Well, Alan's part of the team. Um, so let, let's, let's open up Lynn so I can just ask him who's on the team and who's not.
Okay.
Lynn, can you hear me? Lynn?
I was, I received an icon and I had to unmute. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. I just, I just wanna ask you, Lynn, before we get started, uh, who is on your team out of the, out of the group that Kathleen read?
That'll be the third sentence, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, first of all, introduce myself and thank you, Commissioner, and you, Mr. Chairman, for all your time and attention, and I wanted to thank Lily for all her help she provided. She's been excellent.
Okay, see, Lynn, I was gonna ask you this question before your time starts. If you want to get into your presentation, we'll start your time. Or the, or you can tell me who's on your team, so I know how much time there is.
Uh, Alex, can you put up, um, start that video, put on the first page, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Boy Farm.
Stephen Gordon, the owner?
One moment, please, Commissioner Maza. Second page, please, Alex. Go to the third page.
Okay, these people are all on your team. Now, Kathleen, can you see this?
I, I can. Let me just, if you would, um, jot it down who is. Mr. Lieberman is, has signed up to speak, Mr. Pasquale, uh, Lexi Glass has, and those are the only
Okay, is there any, is there anybody who's signed up to speak who's not on that list? Who are members of the public?
Uh, there's a Gaspar Obando, I don't believe is on that list, and and, uh, Kevin Sullivan.
Okay, all right. Well, as long as we've got members of the public, I just want to let Lynn know. Lynn, you've got fifteen minutes. You can divide it up among your team members any way you want. You can save time for rebuttal if you choose to do that, but, uh, those are the rules. Um, so whenever you're ready to go, go ahead.
Hi, and go ahead, Commissioner Maza.
Yeah, I, uh, it's my understanding, when I Googled it, that Stephen Gordon was the owner.
Stephen Gordon is the owner of the property. He's the sole member. And the speakers should include Ian Weber. He's our grading contractor. He is number six on the, on the list.
Yep.
And he put together the traffic management study, number seven, Larry Minor. He's a experienced planner. He put together our air quality analysis. And the last person who Kathy, Kath- Kathleen just mentioned is also, I guess, signed up to speak, is Gaspar Obando. Just remember the word civil engineer. There were some questions regarding best management practice and drainage, drainage regarding the impermeable nature of, um, of the riding ring.
Okay, well, it sounded, it, it sounds, Lynn, like, like everybody who was signed up is a member of your team, so. Whoever is, whoever is a consultant or whoever is a, uh, an owner or an applicant, those are all included. You all get fifteen minutes combined, all right, not individually. So, uh, whenever you're ready to begin the presentation, go ahead.
Sure, Jennings?
Thank you.
Yeah, hold on just a second.
Yeah, my, uh, Kathleen, did, did these, did, were all the names listed to sign up to speak part of this team?
There was just one, a Kevin Sullivan, but I show that he was, he's a part.
Is he the Verizon attorney who?
I believe that is the case. He may have signed up for the wrong.
Uh, if you want to, uh, just unmute him to confirm that he didn't intend to speak on this, then, uh, Lynn will know he has the entire fifteen minutes, and there's, uh, no other speakers.
Yes, Kevin Sullivan.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and members of the Commission. I did not intend to sign up to speak on this item, but rather on the five Verizon items tonight as part of Verizon's team.
Thank you.
And I do show him signed up for those. That's why I was thinking he probably did not want to speak on this.
Okay, so we don't have any members of the public apart from, uh, from Lynn's team. So, again, Lynn, whenever you're ready to go.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Alex, could you turn to the, uh, next, uh, sheet, please? Um, Mr. Chairman, we asked, um, Sirree Gordon Sobansky, so Solanke to write a letter to the planning commission a couple of months back to explain the benefits of this particular riding ring. The letter was not part of the original staff report. So we've asked, um, we wanted to, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, uh, read the letter that Lexi, that, uh, Sirree put together. We're gonna ask Lexi, our design, uh, consultant, read this letter. Lexi, please.
Hello, uh, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. I am writing to explain the design of our proposed riding ring and the benefits of the Rizo Horse Ebb and Flow Riding System for equestrian safety. The Rizo Horse Ebb and Flow Riding Surface provides a constant basic moisture level throughout the equestrian riding surface and provides elasticity through the capillary action of the sand. A consistent moisture level improves a horse's grip and stability on each square meter of the riding arena. The quality of the riding surface can be individually adapted to their respective requirements of any equestrian discipline via the riding arena control system. The riding surface can be automatically adjusted and restored to each individually specified moisture content of the riding surface. Together, these measures provide safe footing to prevent sliding and stress on tendons and ligaments, and helps to prevent falls and injuries due to horses and their riders, which is so important. As an added benefit, the riding surface system provides a good and pleasant air quality with no dust formation. It is recognized that a horse's musculoskeletal system requires a comprehensive diet to help prevent injury. A diet with nutrients in, to assist bone, connective tissue, and muscle health and correctly fitted gear is key. A proper warm-up before training and a warm-down period after work is also very important. Another key factor to promote musculoskeletal health is the riding surface a horse is asked to work on. Safe footing to prevent sliding and stress on tendons and ligaments is very important. The impact on horse's cartilage and ultimately their bones performing at any level of equestrian sport can be adversely affected by working on a poor riding surface. To achieve the best results in my equestrian endeavors, my primary goal is to keep my horses healthy. To achieve that goal, I chose an engineered surface that, engineered surface product that reduces impacts and promotes a healthy musculoskeletal system and a happy horse. Thank you for your time in this matter. Uh, next slide, please, and I'll turn it back over to Lynn. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a slide you've already seen. This just shows that the area of Murphy Way was developed. Next slide, please. This is highlighted. You can see this is a largely developed area. Next slide, please. We've got a five-acre parcel, and the reference barn was discussed with you previously. It's a steel barn. We're going to recycle it. Next slide, please. This is our actually proposed project, and with the next slide, I'll turn this over to our lead architect, um, David Pasquale. David, would you please?
Uh, thank you, Lynn, and, um, thank you, uh, Commissioner and planning commissioners. Um, here's an overview of the, uh, our proposed barn and stables and riding ring. Next slide. Uh, here's a fly-through of the riding ring. Uh, we're coming up the driveway from Murphy Way. And then you can see the riding ring before you. Um, and on the, um, on the, on the right side there in the back, you can see that's the, the wall, that's, uh, the twelve-foot wall, which is a cut. Uh, next slide. There's another, here's just another overview. Next slide. Uh, for the, for the stables building, uh, we've got the barn building, which is the two-story building that you can see in the foreground. And the, and the two stables buildings are, are single-story, which are, which are under eighteen feet. Next slide. So here's a, a fly-through of the, the stables building. This is building C on the lower terrace, which has nine stables, and then building B on the upper terrace with five, and then here's the barn. And there's an overview, so you can see how we really kind of stepped it into the, the hillside. Here's a couple of elevations. Next. And the stables. Next. And the second stables building. Next. And then here's a, here's a, um, a YouTube video of, of the Ebb and Flow System riding ring. I think, I think the video stopped. I think we might be having some difficulties with the YouTube video.
It's a year three-minute video. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. Uh, Alex, if you could turn back to page three, that lists the, uh, Tomboy's Farm, my team, that would be helpful for the commissioners to pick out who might want to ask questions of.
Well, Lynn, since we know you, I think the best approach is gonna be to ask the questions to you, and you pick out the, the person who can best
I could do that, please.
to the question. You've got six minutes and eight seconds left. Do you, are you gonna conclude at this point, uh, assuming there are no out, no, uh, speakers in opposition? Lynn? Okay, so, Kathleen, are there any speakers, uh, other than the, the project team?
Uh, no, Chair, there are not.
Okay, fine. So we'll conclude the public hearing at this point. Bring it back to the commission table for questions, discussion, a motion. Who would like to start? John?
I'll start with a simple one. Uh, what is the size of an Olympic riding ring, uh, for equestrian?
Depends on the event, John. Favorite.
This is an equestrian event. Whatever they have.
Right, dressage is one thing, uh, the, the three-day events have a different sized ring, um, so, I'm not sure, but there is an answer.
Uh, I can't answer that question. I don't have the information on that, John. I mean, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, uh, second question. How much you have a moisture control system where you pump water into the ground, uh, according to your, your thing? How much, how, what is the water content as a percentage of the, uh, ground when you pump water into it, and how thick is the layer above the barrier?
Um, Alan, would you know that information? Alan Lieberman, are you online?
She may have to.
I'm, I'm unmuted, okay. Uh, the, uh, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I, I wanna, I, I know there's water pumped into the ground above the barrier. What percentage of, how thick is the, the fill above the barrier, and what percentage of that is water?
I couldn't tell you how much percentage is water, uh, and also, I don't think I can tell you exactly moisture content that is required for these horses. I do know that the watering comes from underneath the sand. It's a twelve-inch base as opposed to watering it from the top, which, uh, is a more efficient way of moisturizing and keeping the soil, uh, at a, uh, a moisture content and a stiffness that is best for the horses. Uh, it's about five thousand gallons a day to keep the, uh, riding rink, uh, this size, uh, at the right moisture content for the horses, uh, optimum, optimum type of, uh, you know, stiffness for their bodies and their, and their workouts.
So it's, okay, so five thousand gallons for thirty-five thousand square feet per day? Is basically it, okay? And what is the purpose of the observation deck and the lounge?
Uh, well, I imagine it's to, uh, view the horses, how they work out. Uh, the lounge is, is there to, I, uh, I guess I could leave that to the architect, the other ones who put it in, but, uh, But you're spending all that time there, I guess you want to relax a little bit. You want to have, the observation deck is built at a level so that you're at a level of seeing the rider's head and the horses, how they're working, how they're performing, how the trainers are taking the horses through their paces or the, not so much the trainer, but there's always I forget what you call those people, who are on-site, who work the horses out when, when Sarah's not there to drive them and work them herself. But maybe we can go ahead to David and let him let you know what the thoughts were on the client when we, when we put this together.
Okay.
David?
Kathleen, you have to unmute.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Yeah, so the, the idea with the, you know, of course, the observation area, like Alan said, is for you know, coaches and, and friends to get a good look at the, the horses and what they're doing from a level that is really as, as high as we could get it. We, we did have to stay below our height limits in that area. We had to stay below 24 feet because it's a, it's a flat-roofed area. And then the lounge is just a place to get a couple of refreshments and a little bit of, a little bit of shade, because the upper level, we've got, we've got no cover in that observation area, so those are the thoughts with the lounge.
Okay, and what was the thought on how many people you would have? I'm assuming this is for one person to train, so how many coaches, how many observers was it planned for?
Well, it's not a very large space. You know, I think if there were 10 people up there, that would be a crowd. So it's, it's, it's not that, it's really not set for, for a group much larger than that.
Okay, and you mentioned coaches. Are there coaches for different events? Is that why there's more than one?
No, I mean, I think the owner could answer that question better than I could, but I really don't, I don't know if there's one coach or more than one coach. It was just part of the brief was to have that space.
Can anybody talk on this?
Yeah, well, if you get recognized by the chairman.
I'm sorry.
Chairman.
Alan?
Yes. Sarah is, of course, an Olympic jumper and like one of the Chairman mentioned before, she just won $24,000 at an event. You don't get to win that money unless you're coached properly. I don't know if she goes through one coach or two coaches, because she's always looking for somebody to better form, better her ride, help with how the horses work out. I mean, you're talking a lot of different aspects of a championship pedigree, whether it's in basketball or billiards or tennis or soccer, you need these people to help you win and to train. And therefore, that's what this facility is all about, making them have the best facility to work in, the best atmosphere to talk about things. And that's just what this is all about, is putting a championship team together. That's why you have an equestrian riding ring that is built per size, per specs. You wouldn't expect a tennis player to build on his property anything less than a championship tennis court to train on.
All right, thank you. John, more questions?
I'll let Craig go for a while.
Okay, Craig?
I'm going for a while, but how many, and this is probably either for Lynn or maybe Mr. Lieberman. How many cubic yards of sand is added both below and above the impermeable membrane? And then as a sort of follow-up to that, what is the so-called selected fiber? What is that made of? Is that something we want to be concerned about toxicity or is that qualified as, as grading material too? What is that material? Thanks.
Alan, do you have that information? I know that the fiber, there's different fibers that they add to the special sand.
Yes, the fiber.
It has capillary, has capillary action. That brings the water in and helps bring the water out, but dangerous? I doubt if it's hazardous. I mean.
No, if, if I'm speaking, the water, the fibers in the sand are not, are not hazardous, otherwise it wouldn't be there for the horses, because they'll tend to lick and eat and do anything that's around. As far as the cubic yards of sand, you're talking about 39,000 or 35,000 square feet by one foot. So whatever that is, divided by 27 is what your cubic yards would be. I guess I could give that to you.
Well, hang on. Looking at the, the video, it looked to me like they put down a substantial layer of sand beneath the membrane to, to, to make a level. And then, and then it looks like about a foot or two on the top of that, so.
The, what they do is you've, you're on your compacted fill and they'll probably laser about 12 to, about two to six inches of sand on that. And then once that's there, they'll put the impermeable layer down, that sheet membrane sheet goods. And then on top of that goes the four-inch perforated pipe, maybe 32 inches on center all the way around that are connected to each other and connected to those storage or those water basins all around the outside of the property. And then they put in their 12 inches of sand that's got this fiber mesh in it, just to help cohes the whole thing together. Once the moisture gets in, compacts it and keeps it at a moisture level. Now, the system is made to bring in water to keep it at an optimum point. It keeps down the dust because it's never, you know, dry enough to, for dust to blow around. And if there's rain or, you know, some sort of waterfall, the ebb and flow system takes away that excess. You could have, you could have a three or four or five inch rain in how many hours it takes, or within an hour, Commissioner, that surface is ready to go back and ride on. That's how quick this water gets pumped out. It's all computerized systems.
If I could just observe the, the numbers he gave and you could tell me if this sounds right. At 35,000 square feet approximately, and we're talking something over a foot total, because we've got both above and below the membrane.
Correct.
So if it were, if, if that were there for 50,000 square, cubic feet, something over, in other words, something over the 35, approximately 50, to get cubic yards, you would divide that by 27?
Correct.
Gets you somewhere in the realm roughly of 2,000 cubic yards.
Okay, I, I would defer to Commissioner Smith on that. He's the man who would know best, but, but yes, that's what we'd have. And that would be brought in, that's a special type of sand, like a silica sand or whatever it is. And that's brought in solely for this purpose, solely for these horses and for the use, because of the way the water can come in and migrate in and out into that surface.
And to my mind, that, that qualifies as import fill in the grading tally. That would be a matter of discussion.
Okay, other questions? I'm sorry, Alan.
I'll pass for the moment.
Okay, John?
I'm trying to get, and I guess Lily could answer this. In the last 30 years, I can't remember anything being considered impermeable. It was a it wasn't a swimming pool or cement surface. I mean, exempt. And so my question would be, we're, we're grading on a three-to-one slope. We're taking out 9,000 cubic yards, approximately. We're running 200. Let's see what it was. It was 750 truck loads over 45 days. Which is a lot of grading to be exempt. Has the city ever exempted a one-dimensional object as a structure? Has the city ever exempted anything without any type of foundation as a structure?
I'm going to ask for Richard for, for help with that.
So we have exempted tennis courts and pools in the past. And we've been looking at that, you know, more carefully, and that's what kind of leads us to where we are today. And the reason why we went the route that we went with this was that, and I think this also speaks to what the previous director was doing too, was given the amount of construction and just project involvement to put this area in, that is the reason why we, we looked at it as a structure. Was because of how significant it was. It wasn't as simple as just like in the past, for example, we've seen riding arenas and where there are nothing more than some posts along the outside of the arena, followed up then with just some sort of fill material, whether it be, I've seen recycled tissues, special compounds or mix, soil mixes, just the sand. So it's because of the scope of work. And if the, the Commission wishes to you know, have a, a different opinion of that, that we respect that and we'll, you know, make a note of it for future applications. But in looking at this, you know, this project's been in the, our pipeline for a while. It's my understanding that it was given the amount of the structure is what happened here.
Okay, so if I wanted, if I had a three-to-one slope behind my house, it was big and I wanted to put in a football field, would you allow me to grade 200,000 cubic yards?
If it's just soil, we would look at it differently. Like I said, this one, it's, Lily, how far down does this thing go? About four or five feet, I thought I, I saw?
I mean, in some places, it's, it's a kind of 11 feet.
Okay. So you know, a football field would, to me is, it's dirt. It's the same material. This is, you know, something mechanical that you know, it is hydraulic, I guess you could say. But this is mechanical and this, these are permanent materials being placed in the ground.
Well, if I had astroturf. Well, can I build a 200,000?
This, this, look, this is, this is hypothetical stuff. John, you're really, it's just, yes, it is, just, it's just, it's just argumentative. I mean, it's not a question of what you build in, in your backyard.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. Has Zorasis ever considered this?
No, this is.
Is it in, anywhere in the LIP or, or any other city document?
Quoted the LIP.
Not as far as exempt grading under, under horse rings.
I just read it. See if I can find it for you.
No, you said, they said you could have horse ring. It didn't say you could have exempt grading. I mean, in other words, well, let me ask you a real question.
All right.
Is there any lot in Malibu other than a one-to-one slope that you could not do this on, exactly the same project? Exactly. Same acreage, same process, same everything. And the reason I ask you that is, I'm wondering whether, without an interpretation by even Zorisis, we are opening up every single lot in Malibu to grading tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of, of export grading.
You know, I'm, I'm sure that there are other lots that could try to do something similar like this. This is by far a, a riding rig project that is more excessive than the ones we've seen in the past. We've, you know, for example, Bonzel and up on the west end of PTH, we brought projects before the Commission and for those riding arenas and those we, you know, we didn't say were not, excuse me, call that exempt grading. They were large scale. They're, you know, they're, they were on almost similar to this one. But that's because they simply just placed dirt on, you know, just create, churn the dirt or whatever the term may be, turn the dirt. But you know, this, the reason why staff did that on this one is because of the, the amount of the structure. Now, if the Commission disagrees, you know, the option here is that this be processed with the variance on the grading quantities.
Well, I, I'm trying to get at what, what you could do. If I had a, a property and I wanted to put in a giant lawn, if I put a five-mill plastic barrier under it, would you consider that a structure and I could get away with, I could not get away, I could grade as much as I want and get as flat as a lot as I wanted?
You know, I, I know this is the, the greatest explanation, but once again, this thing is essentially hydraulic. We have upwards of 11 feet because of how they have to grade in certain areas. I mean, this is, this is a substantial amount of infrastructure being put in the ground beyond just plastic sheathing.
John, I, John, I think we understand your point, that, that you don't feel that it should be exempt from the grading quantity limitations because it's a riding ring and you don't, you disagree with staff's point. And that's fine. So let's, let's, we get your point on that.
I'm trying to determine what this allows. Could I, for example, put a piece of concrete under anything I wanted to make flat, dump some dirt on top of it and call it a structure?
John, it's a hypothetical question. Let's talk about the application that's in front of us. No, it is. You're, you're asking if I did this, would it be permitted? Make an application and you'll find out. You know, it's like, if I had a brother, would he like cheese?
I could ask a question. Can I put an oil derrick in my front yard and nobody's ever applied for it before? So therefore, it's a hypothetical. That's ridiculous. It is ridiculous. The question here is, what are the ramifications of allowing slopes in neighborhoods to be flattened to the point of being almost an acre?
Yeah, John, my, my, my point is simply this, that you're making, you've made your point. I understand your point. And you're arguing now that because the rest of us ought to support your point, because the consequences of not supporting your point are horrendous and it's going to lead to grading the entire surface of the Santa Monica Mountains. I get your point. I get your style of argument. But we get, the point has been made. You've made your point.
But I'm trying to understand how we have such a large change in something in our codes that has never been reviewed by anybody.
Nobody's for that. Are there other, you had your hand up earlier, David?
I, I'd like to move the question and my motion is that we adopt the staff recommendation.
Okay, well, I have a lot of other questions and I'm not.
Well, you, you'll have a chance to raise them. Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Moved and seconded, okay. Yes, Trevor?
Can I just clarify that includes the change from Lily that you had from her presentation? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, okay. I, I have issues with this on a couple levels. First one, I sort of already put out there about the, the LIP permitted uses in RR zoning. And to clarify, yes, you are permitted to have horses in a sort of incidental ancillary way to a residence, but expressly not permitted is the equestrian riding and training facilities and activities. It seems the LIP contemplates a difference between personal horses and something more sophisticated and involving structures and so forth. That, that is explicit. And in fact, five, 10 minutes ago, Mr. Lieberman referred to it as a facility. So that, that's, that's a problem I have at that level. Now, in sort of following what John is talking about, it seems to me, and I'll explain this in more depth, but it seems like you can either, if, if this is a foundation, if we're going to treat this as a foundation, then practically by definition, it's not permeable. And I mean, we have that plastic layer in there. We have a high density of the sand and fill material. So to me, it's not like a swimming pool where a swimming pool has a large body of water and maybe six inches at the top. And if you get a couple of inches of rain, it's going to be absorbed by that body of water. This has a lot of sand in it that's, that's damp. And it seems to me, if you have a couple of inches of rain, that's a big change on here. So it, it seems to me like it is an impermeable surface. And it seems to me if you have a couple of inches of rain, that's a big change on here. So it it seems to me like it is an impermeable surface. Um, and so I think you you either, it's either. It's either sixty thousand square feet of impermeable area total when you count the other structures, the thirty-five plus the twenty-five of the. With the rest of the lot. Or it's ten thousand square feet or and now we just learned with the addition of the sand, it's maybe a couple thousand more cubic yards. So maybe roughly twelve, uh. Tw- twelve hundred cubic yards of, um, or more than that, uh, of of the grading. Um, so it's, it, to me, it's either doesn't m- make it on the permeability or on the grading. You can't have both. That's, I I don't know. Am I making that clear? Does that, do people see?
I think you made it clear. Yeah, I I I I see your point. Um, and, uh. The only, the only thing I would say about this, and and it may be that that that, uh, Mr. Lieberman could talk about it, but what I understood. The whole debate about the surface was is that it it moves water in and out. Down into the ground or back up into the ground controlled by, uh, computers in order to keep. The pla- the the plain surface, in order to keep the riding surface, uh, at a, at an optimal, um, uh, level. So I I think that that kind of speaks to me against your impermeable. Uh, argument because it it is open to the ground should it need to be. Uh, um. As far as training facility is concerned, um, I I. You know, fir- first of all, uh, the 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 fact that this woman, uh, managed to win twenty-five thousand dollars, that's a huge prize. And in the, in the world of Grand Prix jumping and I used to, I didn't ride Grand Prix horses, but I rode hunter jumpers and and, uh. And the idea, that probably represents a return on investment of. Oh, a millionth of a percent. I mean, it's just absolutely insignificant compared to the amount of money. That training one of these horses takes. Uh, as far as, uh, it, I I think. That, you know, again, we get into the situation of of. Uh, the LIP was written by fallible human beings. They were trying to express an idea using particular words. Um, I think the clear distinction is something that some individual has as and 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 wants to have a horse. Trainer come by and 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 work with her horses. That's one thing. The type of training facility it was talking about is the standard type of training facility where you have a big barn and people can bring their horses. And they have one trainer that works out of the barn and works with all those people and takes them to shows and so on and so on. That to me is a training facility. That's like the. Places over off in Agora over there, that the the actually places that I used to ride with. All those are training facilities. This is a individual, a very. A very devoted individual, but an individual who's got a, a, a facility. That she has put together to for her own personal purposes, or at least her father's put it together, maybe that's, you know, a better way to put it. But somebody put it together for for her. It's it's for that individual. Uh, I think it would, there'd be some question. I mean, you know, she may, at in the, in the fullness of time, as she gets older, she may. You know, get tired of of running horses down, you know, five foot walls and and seeing if they can make it over or not. She may decide to quit. And somebody's going to want to use that facility. And if somebody came in and brought a trainer in and said, okay, fine, we're going to bring in horses, I think you'd have a real, a real issue. But I don't think it's an issue that exists now because I think that the use is consistent with what the LIP intended to do.
Well, that that led to my next question, which was exactly.
As far as the lounge is concerned, I don't see, I mean, you know, I I don't even see how that's an issue. Uh, you know, if you want to have. Ten people over, have drinks and come up and stand on the, on the thing to watch, to watch the the horses go, uh, how is that? How is that even an issue that that is before us? I mean, it's like anybody else. If they want to have a. A deck on their, uh, on their front yard to, you know, to to watch whatever, uh, it's just not, not something that, uh, is within our purview. So those are my thoughts on it.
Well, following your point though, if if Ms. Solanke decided to move or or they wanted to sell this place. I don't think we'd be disposed to put a condition on it right now that says if and when that day comes that this whole place needs to be demoed. Because it was a personal facility and we can't now allow it to be suddenly hand, I mean, to me. You've got fourteen stalls. It's it's a facility. It's not just somebody keeping a couple of horses in their backyard.
No, a- and and, um, there are, there are several. There was one down in in, uh, Ramirez Canyon where. There was one woman who was very serious about her dressage and she had, uh, uh. A large stable down there. I mean, you know, like, like two dozen stalls. Um. But it was for her personal use. She was a dedicated dressage rider. As far as demoing the place, no. You'd simply, you know, if if a training facility comes in, it now becomes a business. So now you need a CUP. Uh, and, uh, you know, that that can be denied or or conditioned however the city wants to condition it.
Well, the city, the LIP says you can board horses with a CUP, but you you cannot have a training facility, period.
Then, okay, then then there wouldn't, it wouldn't be permitted, but it wouldn't have to be torn down. John?
Um. Again, this is a hypothetical, but it's it's a one hundred percent probability and that is at some point. Horse facility disappears. Somebody sells it. Somebody wants to build a mansion. They have gotten. Gotten to, uh, uh, flatten off the hillside, make a giant pad. Do they have to restore it? Or can you go in, build a horse facility, two years later, build a mansion, you're home free?
I don't know.
Question for Richard.
You would not have to restore the pad. Uh, you know, it was legally permitted. Uh, you know. What they're doing here isn't triggering any of our, uh, hillside development criteria. These folks aren't grading and Lily, correctly if I'm wrong, but I I don't recall any steep slopes in this. Um, it it's, it is a relatively flat area. So no, they wouldn't have to restore this area. Um, in fact, if somebody were to come in and, uh, propose a house on the lot, we would want them to put the house on the flattest portion. So that there is no further, um, you know, no further, uh, disturbance to the land. And the other issue here is that the code does allow for a two acre development area. Uh, if, uh, obviously if your property is big enough. So if you have a property that's large enough, you're allowed to develop and disturb up to two acres. And they are complying with that here as well. So you could replace this riding arena with with simply just a house and some yards if you wanted to. Um, the the code allows for disturbance up to two acres.
So, but we're giving a variance to let them do it because the code is not allowing to do it, allow them to do it on a three to one slope. So we're giving them a variance.
That's not a variance, John.
Is it?
Variance, the variance is for the, for the, for the wall.
For the wall.
There are three, there's a three to one slope variance in here.
It's a site plan review for.
Yeah, John.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's different than a variance, right?
Well, okay, different term. We're allowing them to build on three to one slope, which is not a normal, uh, uh, entitlement. Now.
It is with a site plan review.
Site ran review has to have certain findings and was in and whether or not they're made for a house or riding rink is, you know, I don't know. So. And you're going to shut me down for a hypothetical, but anybody who wants to have a big flat lot, they they put in a riding rink and then they build a house. Is that right? And so it changes the dynamics of the neighborhood and you say there's no change in the neighborhood. Uh, now, there's a couple of other things I want to ask. We have a, some kind of ordinance and I couldn't find it right away that. Does not allow you to have a lawn over twenty-five hundred square feet because of the water usage. Have we looked at anything to do with the water usage? Because if this was a lawn instead of a dirt, we would, we'd say no.
But it's not, Commissioner Maza.
It's dirt.
It's not lawn.
Unless you don't weed it. Um. And and that's the question. I mean, is this.
Do you have a response, Dan?
The city biologist did review the project for for water use and complacent and the city biologist would need to review. Um, again, when the project goes in for plant check.
Right, but, uh, we put in the, uh, twenty-five hundred limit on lawns because of water use. Has any study been done on water use?
They're reusing it, Commissioner Maza. You see that? They've got tanks that comes in. They got to keep a certain moisture for the horse to to run on the, on the.
To me, you're not using water. They said they're using five thousand gallons a day. Okay? Uh, now, uh, so that's a question of whether that was ever studied. Now, uh. Is, why don't we have a rodenticide paragraph in here? We've been putting them in everything else.
That, I apologize, that might have been omitted in error. I can, I can add that to the.
And then, and then, um. We don't have a dark skies ordinance provisioned in here. We have it in every other one we have. It's a law now. Uh. Now, one of the provisions of the, uh, environmental review, I think it was, was that they need a. A closed. Um. Organic waste area. And some kind of machinery that goes along with that so we don't have organic waste leaking. I didn't see it on the plans. And then I can find it. It's in one of these reviews. It says you must have it. Cause you don't want to pile up twenty, what is it, eighteen horses worth of horse poop. For a month and let it sit there and. You know, we're talking greenhouse gases, et cetera. So is there a reason why that's not included in the project?
I think it is. Uh, I talked to Alan when I, uh, met him out there. Maybe he can. Uh, help out on, uh, explaining what the plans are for, uh, waste disposal.
Uh. The, uh, waste management company has, uh, worked with, uh, riding rinks in Malibu. And they have, uh, I'm not quite sure what they call it, but they have regular services and specialized bins. That, uh, they bring in and that's where all the, uh, as you put it, the horse poop gets put in. And, uh, every day, uh, it's a closed facility and it's going, it's, I guess, maybe every week. Week and a half they come, they bring one new bin and take another one away. The waste management is a, uh. A recognized remover, uh, a waste disposal of all these, uh, uh, horse waste.
Well, here's what it's in the, uh, sort of confined animal facilities, number ninety-seven in the resolution. It says new development or redevelopment, just have livestock waste storage area. Livestock waste storage area shall be designed and constructed to the, uh, to be watertight. And covered with, uh, and covered with such that stormwater will not be allowed to discharge from the. Area storage shall be located at least fifty feet from the drainage swale. Blah, blah, blah. It's a special facility. It's not a dumpster.
Well, uh, I think a dumpster would require, uh, would be all those facilities to go out of.
Their sound is beginning to.
Watertight area. With a drainage, with, with, uh, at least fifty feet from, uh, including, uh. Shall be constructed. Okay, not, that's part of your resolution.
Constructed or, constructed or provided, Commissioner. Uh, I guess it's another thing of semantics, just like the word facility might be. So we might have a a self-contained, uh, 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 waste facility, uh, that. I I I would think it would be even better to have something that was a self-contained and removable than to have something built on site. Which over the years could break down, uh, and and cause those things that are supposed to protect as watertight, airtight and all that.
Well, Mr. Wiles' motion requires you to have the other facility. I was just wondering where it is. Uh, it's condition number ninety-seven.
I don't know.
Okay, now. Uh. I have a question about the. Traffic management plan. I don't see anything in there that requires, you're going to have nine hundred trucks going over this property. Staff reports to seven hundred, the way, the the management plan says nine hundred, okay? And the management plan also says it stops that winding way. Well, it's got to make it to the highway. Uh, winding way is a private road. So you're going to have nine hundred trucks running along a private road with a steep entrance to Coast Highway. And it's not in our plan. And there's no restoration of the damage done by nine hundred trucks. Uh, uh, maximum eighty thousand pounds. I can't imagine them being that big, but maybe they are. Dennis would know. Um. I think the management plan is totally deficient and the neighborhood has to pay for this road. Uh, many, many times in the past, we've insisted that it has to be restored. And I think a decent management plan should get you to the highway on private roads. Not just go down until they change the name of the road. Um. So I think that's something that's got to be addressed or the neighbors are going to be driving potholes for the rest of their life.
Richard, has it not been our pla- our our practice to require, um, uh, traffic management plans subject to the approval of the, uh. Public Works Department?
That's correct. They, they typically do review that and make determination and one of the. Uh, actions that they do take quite often is that they also require like a video survey. Of the road prior to construction and then that way there's a, a d- an evidence or a document showing how it looks. And then they they require the owner to restore it to that, uh, restore it to that at the end of the.
But we many, many times. In fact, I don't remember when we have it in this situation. We put it in the, in the resolution. They have to do it because there's no way they'll have a violation if you don't. And, uh, it's been done at least five times in Ramirez, I know of. It's been done on almost every private street.
Is there a condition?
People's in and access. Access.
Lily, is, is there a condition? Is there a condition requiring, uh, submission of a traffic management plan to public works?
Yes, condition eight five requires a construction management plan to be reviewed by public works. If if the existing management plan is insufficient, then the public works department will require that it is. Adequate.
Okay.
Well, and I don't know why we always put it in the resolution. I I think you should protect the neighbors. Uh. If you driven under these private streets.
Other things, John?
Well. I'll just say, well, we need, we need dark skies. We need, uh, we need, uh, uh, organic waste area is required. We need pesticide language. It's not official yet. We have to have that in there. I think we should have a, a, a traffic management plan. Restoration required, photograph before and after, which we all, that's what we always put in the resolution. And I think. That is. Well, my last thing is I I do not think it's our job to invent new ways to grade hills and let people get around them.
Okay, I think we've got most of your points. Let me, let me ask a staff about the dark skies, uh, provision and the rodenticide provision. We have, uh, recently been adding certainly dark skies provisions. Is there a dark sky? Yes, Trevor?
I was gonna say, uh, Chair Jennings, those items are in there. Their condition is twenty-nine and forty-four, I believe.
Thank you.
I don't believe so. Twenty-nine and forty-four?
Twenty-nine, uh, addresses the lighting request or dark skies and forty-four talks about the use of pesticides. Insecticides, herbicides.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, for the record, I, um, on the retaining wall variance. Do we know, does anybody in the immediate neighborhood have twelve foot retaining walls? Is this speaking to the issue of s- special privilege? Do we look at that? This is for Richard, I assume. I mean, Lily might, you might know, but I guess Richard might know more than neighborhood.
I would have to look, uh, to be truthful with you. I do know that we have granted some variants and I'm trying to think of what we did for the Jeffersons. Along, um, Murphy Way and the winding way area. Uh.
Well, then, just for the record, I I would say that on the retaining well variance, I couldn't make the finding because. The, I don't think we necessarily have that information, but also part of that finding was that it wouldn't impact views. Uh, scenic viewing areas, et cetera, and this alteration would be visible from Canon Road, so. of scenic viewing areas, et cetera, and this alteration would be visible from Canaan Road, so I I I feel like that, that's also something that that as a matter of law, we wouldn't make for the record.
Okay, I looked at that uh myself because a- and actually uh looking at where the retaining wall was, I I make a couple of points. I tend to try to look at these things by, you know, what's the, what's the purpose of the rule? Why did we put it in? Why, why was it developed in the first place? And the twelve-foot versus six-foot retaining wall was always considered um an aesthetic issue. It was never, it's not, doesn't have anything to do with engineering. It doesn't have anything to do with anything other than aesthetics. People, they didn't want, people who wrote the rule didn't want people having to look at big, high retaining walls. All right, that's fine. So when I took a look at this particular particular retaining wall, uh first of all, from the northern side, from the uphill side, there's one foot showing, so that's not an issue. From the other side, I actually went around and tried to find places from which that retaining wall would be visible. There's nothing visible on the north side of the highway. The only place that I can think of where it might be visible would be on Upper Route Ramirez Road uh where you have that large white house that steps down the hill. Uh it might be visible from there, completely a- apart from or across the canyon. As far as Canaan Doom is concerned, standing there looking at Canaan Doom, the cars are absolutely tiny. I I I can't, first of all, the 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 retaining wall is or oriented at ninety degrees, more or less, to Canaan Doom Road. Uh and uh I I don't know, I guess if you were driving up Canaan Doom Road and happened to look off to your right uh about what, uh certainly more like a half a mile, uh you might be able to spot the thing. But but as far as I'm concerned, given the purpose of the role, the 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 retaining wall uh doesn't bother me.
Well, to me, the 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 question is, does it impact the view? And to my mind, sure, you don't see the wall itself, but allowing the wall allows for that huge flat area that you see driving down. You'll see like, oh, it looks like they have a soccer pitch down there or, you know, whatever it is.
Okay, um so Dennis?
I'm just gonna say on the wall, obviously, it it they need to cut that in for the square footage of the of the writing area and it blends into the hillside. They'll build it so it, it's not gonna go up and just ninety off. They're gonna build it so it blends in with the, with the hillside. It's gonna be, doesn't even matter.
Okay, so we're getting close to, I think we're getting close to a vote. Um David, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have a question about an amendment to my own motion, which I guess is addressed primarily Jeff to you and to Dennis, reading the tea leaves here. The earlier concerns that John raised, I'm I'm sympathetic to to a point. Do you think it's necessary or advisable to to put in an additional condition? And I'm not gonna word this correctly, but but that basically says this has to be a non-commercial use of this facility. That is, it it cannot be a business.
I'm trying to think.
I I have mixed feelings about that myself, but.
Yeah, I'm a little troubled because I don't know what, you know, I'm not sure how we would parse the idea of a business. I mean, uh you know, Commissioner Hill just made the remark at the opening of this as well. She won twenty-five thousand dollars. She's a professional.
And so what's the difference between that and like a professional golfer or anybody else who's out on a on a tourney and in this respect, you, by analogy, this is her office?
I guess what I'm talking about is third parties. I'm I'm not pressing it well, but if if the owner is using it, and I'm using the word owner in quotes, for the owner's own personal purposes, family member, owner himself, somebody else training to be an Olympian, that's one thing. If there are, you know, a dozen horses from third parties that are paying fees to be housed there, that's a different thing to me.
Well, one, one, one limitation on this uh to point out is that LIP has a a section that says the boarding of horses as a commercial use shall be subject to sta- same standards, except that the minimum area required shall be five acres. This is four point nine six acres. So that might answer your concern to say it can't be used for commercial use because it's not quite five acres.
And maybe it's already taken care of.
Trevor?
I I would say that you just.
I called on Trevor, John.
Okay.
I was gonna say, uh in general, when we're doing the coastal development permit as we hear, not a con- commercial use permit, we don't put conditions about the use of it since we're dealing with these, the uh facilities and the structure itself. If the use that is that is conducted violates, you know, the city's code, then, you know, the city would take enforcement action. I think as Richard mentioned earlier, um if this was converted into a public facility, then it would be um it'd be a code enforcement issue to deal with.
And John, you point out that our next item has a twelve-year history on code enforcement.
I withdraw my suggestion.
Okay, um other comments or can we take a vote? Dennis?
Just, just one real quick. Listen, I I'm hearing, I'm Commissioner Mazza, I'm hearing you on the road. Uh that's probably one of the crappiest roads we have in town, there's no doubt. But I would think that wouldn't be for us to decide. That would be an HOA thing. I'm surprised I don't see the president, the HOA name, their name on our screen and that would be for them to discuss with the owner to figure out if, you know, how far are you really gonna go with repairing the road if that's the case?
Uh what most people don't know is there's almost no HOAs in Malibu. I don't think there's one in this neighborhood. There are none on Point Doom.
But there is on Windy Way. There, that's part of the syst- that's all the Windy Way Association, that's part of it. I believe it is.
And that does not mean they have CC and ours or, and you can have an association, have a cocktail party, but they bought them, by the way. Jeff knows that.
Okay, um for the comments or let's take a vote. Kathleen?
Are we gonna, are we gonna amend any of these things like rodenticide or anything?
It's in there.
The staff told us it's in there.
It's there.
Did you look at that condition forty-nine, Commissioner Mazza, and that condition forty-four? Are those sufficient to meet your concerns?
You're saying twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, forty-four.
Take a look.
There's also a no uplighting of uh of landscaping, another commi- uh condition. It's already in there.
That's dark skies.
I don't see a reference. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Twenty-nine.
Okay, and the other one's forty-four?
Yep.
And are you gonna exempt them from ninety-seven?
That's a darn good staff we've got here. You know that? Look at that.
Good.
Oh, you know what? They already have my condition also. No commercial use of the property, including the commercial boarding and or training of horses is authorized by this permit.
There you go.
Forty-one.
There you go.
Look at staff smile away. That's what I like to see.
Well done, mind readers.
I'm gonna explain my vote is I do not believe that this body has the right to change the LIP at will.
We got it. Kathleen, could you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No, and Gail Carish is in the room.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Chair Jennings?
Uh yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so.
That was staff's recommendation with the change proposed by Lily and her.
Right. That concludes item five A. Um I'd be willing to entertain a motion to change the agenda to bring uh four A and B and five D, C, D and E forward at this time, if that's a, if that's a motion somebody wants to make.
Those are the uh uh
The wireless items, yeah.
Wireless items, I'm I'm I make that motion.
They're second?
I'll second it.
Who was that? No, great, okay. All right, um.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, let's take a vote on this first.
Commissioner?
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
We're gonna do the wireless next.
That's the motion. Did you hear that wireless items in order next?
Okay, uh yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so you want a five-minute break? Let's take um, yeah, let's take more like ten. Let's get back here about uh about seventeen minutes to nine o'clock, if we can do that, okay? Everybody shut off your mics and your cameras.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a very simple one. On condition thirty-one, when you wanted to change it to six months, what happens if the city does not, they obviously have to come in and get a new permit to move it? What happens if the city doesn't process that? And say four months to allow, give them time to, to build a, build the pole?
Question is to Tyler.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we'll, we'll visit that when the time comes, but, you know, they would just have to take down their, their equipment for the time being, and then subsequently they could apply to relocate it somewhere else, or wait for the improvements to be done to replace their facility.
Well, you know, it's a cell, since cells operate as cells, so you shut one down and one next to it doesn't work. Can we add some language that says, here's them some wiggle room, because we certainly don't want to have somebody hit a pole, and then you can't put your cell up until we run you through three, three extensions and four months to write up the report.
But let's not talk about changes we want to make at this point. Let's, let's, let's do that when we're, after we've had the public hearing. And Tyler could be thinking about his response to that during the public hearing. Kathleen, who have we got?
We have the applicant team of Todd Smith and Daisy Wekampang. Also Kevin Sullivan, Jared Rodriguez, and Zachariah Granum are available for questions. Then we have members of the public, Susan Foster, Tony Simmons, Scott McCullough, Jenny Rusinkow, Lonnie Gordon, and Stephanie Sun Woo.
Okay. Open up somebody, one of the applicant teams. I want to know whether the applicant team is the same for every one of the public hearings we're going to be doing tonight.
It's similar for several, but I'll open up Todd Smith as the first to speak.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Yes. There's two of us, can you hear me?
Yes. I thought that was a familiar sounding, yes. I'm just trying to figure out whether these are all Verizon projects, is it's going to be the same applicant team for, for all the projects or not?
So three of the projects are the same applicant team.
Okay, all right, there's going to be some differences, all right, fine.
Yeah.
So who is the applicant team on this project?
So that would be me and the Verizon people, so motive engineering and, and the Verizon people.
Okay, so you know you've got fifteen minutes, you can use, that, that's for your entire team. You can use as much of it or as little of it as you want. You can save it for rebuttal if you think that that's appropriate. But whenever you're ready, you can begin.
Okay, if, if we could put the slides up, yes, please. And if we could proceed to slide three? Great, thank you very much. And just want to, want to say thank you to the members of staff and to the commissioners here tonight, and I appreciate your time reviewing the project to date and for taking the time tonight. I know it's, it's lengthy and I appreciate it. A quick look at, at this site, and you see there at, at kind of the pin dot, we're located there in the public right of way on the shoulder away from PCH, and kind of in the, in the property line of the properties, kind of surrounded by some tree cover, which, which helps kind of place the, the facility away from any residences. In fact, the nearest residence is about two hundred feet away from this facility. And it's on PCH, which is a busy multi-lane thoroughfare highway one, and and those trees, I think, in that location keep it fairly secluded. Can we go to the next slide, please? Here's a, some before and after photo simulations. And looking at these, I think you can see a, a, an improvement overall in the facility, one being brought up to pay to match and to, to minimize the impacts, as well as kind of a scenario I liken to where you have a multimedia center with your television and your cable equipment, your, your Apple TV equipment, your DVD player, where everything's kind of stacked on one another, and you just don't have enough space, and it's all cluttered. And then you come in and you, you kind of put in a nice media center that better organizes all of your surround sound equipment, and it cleans your whole living room up, and it looks much better. And that's kind of what we have. that the city will notify Verizon at least twenty month, twenty, I'm sorry, twelve months in advance of a request to remove the equipment in the right of way. So for larger projects, the city should know well in advance when you will need to do improvements in the right of way. However, other improvements could occur on behalf of an emergency or similar situations and that need more expeditious action. Six months is reasonable and should provide Verizon with ample time to make accommodations. With that being said, staffer recommends adding the following language to the end of condition thirty-one. The city will give the wireless carrier a six-month advance notice of such removal or relocation, but may provide notice in less time if removal or relocation of the facility is required due to an emergency or other exigent matter. Next slide, please. Condition thirty-seven is related to the permity acknowledging conditions related to painting, camouflage, and undergrounding, and maintaining those concealment elements with future improvements to the facility. Verizon requested to remove the language, undergrounding all were all, undergrounding all equipment to the extent possible. The project does not require undergrounding, however, future improvements might, and as they would need to meet the current design standards. So by removing this language, the city could be waiving its ability to require the applicant to underground future equipment. So what staff recommends is we can exclude the undergrounding language in the first part of that condition, but we want to add it to the last part of the condition to ensure that happens for future improvements. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, sorry, one more. Go back, sorry. Condition forty-four A is related to build-out conditions necessitating the site meet all requirements related to laws, codes, and standards of the applicable right-of-way agency. Verizon requested us change from public, city public works to California Department of Transportation. This one's on PCH. So Caltrans is the applicable right-of-way agency, and we made that change. Next slide, please. Condition fifty-four is related to the expiration of the project. If within one month Verizon does not submit their post-insulation report and fix any problems that were not in the original approval. Precedence has not shown the carrier's readiness to submit post-insulation reports in a timely manner. There have been many cases where staff has received the reports months and even years after the installation. This condition requires the carrier to submit post-insulation reports and fix unpermitted problems in a timely manner. Staff is willing to add language stating that if the carrier needs more than one month to fix any required changes, there should be notice given to the city by the applicant before end of said month, and staff will decide if time, the time requested by the carrier is valid. Next slide, next slide, please. So I'm not going to go over these conditions word for word, but essentially there was some public comment about the safety, the safety review. And so we're adding a condition that these go through a building plan check process with our building safety division, and ultimately they pull permits with the building safety division. Next slide, please. This condition here is regarding requirement to submit these specific engineering documents in the plan check process. Next slide, please. This last condition here is regarding the requirement to submit these specific structural and civil engineering documents in the carrier's project process. Staff is recommending adding these conditions due to the concern over the electrical and fire safety review. Please note that going forward, these conditions will be added to all wireless projects, including the other four on tonight's agenda. So next slide, please. With that, staff recommends adopting resolution twenty-one forty-eight, approving the project as condition. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Tyler. This, next party disclosures, please, Craig. You're muted, Craig.
None.
David.
None.
John.
None.
Dennis.
None.
None for me. All right. Questions, or can we go right to the public hearing? Let's go right to the, John.
Yeah, this is a very simple one. On condition thirty-one, when you wanted to change it to six months. What happens if the city does not, they obviously have to come in and get a new permit to move it? What happens if the city doesn't process that? And say four months to allow, give them time to to build a, build the pole?
Question is to Tyler.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we'll, we'll visit that when the time comes, but you know, they would just have to take down their, their equipment for the time being, and then subsequently they could apply to relocate it somewhere else, or wait for the improvements to be done to replace their facility.
Well, you know, it's a cell, and cells operate as cells, so you shut one down and one next to it doesn't work. Can we add some language that says give them some wiggle room, because we certainly don't want to have somebody hit a pole, and then you can't put your cell up until we run you through three, three extensions and four months to write up the report.
But let's not talk about changes we want to make at this point. Let's, let's, let's do that when we're, after we've had the public hearing. And Tyler could be thinking about his response to that during the public hearing. Kathleen, who have we got?
We have the applicant team of Todd Smith and Daisy Wekampang. Also Kevin Sullivan, Jared Rodriguez, and Zachariah Granum are available for questions. Then we have members of the public, Susan Foster, Tony Simmons, Scott McCullough, Jenny Rusinkow, Lonnie Gordon, and Stephanie Sun Woo.
Okay. Open up somebody, one of the applicant teams. I want to know whether the applicant team is the same for every one of the public hearings we're going to be doing tonight.
It's similar for several, but I'll open up Todd Smith as the first to speak.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Is, is
There's two of us, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought that was a familiar sounding, yes. I'm just trying to figure out whether these are all Verizon projects, is it's going to be the same applicant team for, for all the projects or not?
So three of the projects are the same applicant team.
Okay, all right, there's going to be some differences. All right, fine.
Yeah.
So who is the applicant team on this project?
So that would be me and the Verizon people, so motive engineering and, and the Verizon people.
Okay, so you know, you've got fifteen minutes. You can use, that, that's for your entire team. You can use as much of it or as little of it as you want. You can save it for rebuttal if you think that that's appropriate. But whenever you're ready, you can begin.
Okay, if, if we could put the slides up, yes, please. And if we could proceed to slide three. Great, thank you very much. And just want to, want to say thank you to the members of staff and to the commissioners here tonight, and I appreciate your time reviewing the project to date and for taking the time tonight. I know it's, it's lengthy and I appreciate it. A quick look at, at this site, and you see there at kind of the pin dot, we're located there in the public right of way on the shoulder away from PCH, and kind of in the, in the property line of the properties, kind of surrounded by some tree cover, which, which helps kind of place the, the facility away from any residences. In fact, the nearest residence is about two hundred feet away from this facility. And it's on PCH, which is a busy multi-lane thoroughfare highway one, and and those trees, I think, in that location keep it fairly secluded. Can we go to the next slide, please? Here's a, some before and after photo simulations. And looking at these, I think you can see a, an improvement overall in the facility, one being brought up to pay to match and to minimize the impacts, as well as kind of a scenario I liken to where you have a multimedia center with your television and your cable equipment, your, your Apple TV equipment, your DVD player, where everything's kind of stacked on one another, and you just don't have enough space, and it's all cluttered. And then you come in and you, you kind of put in a nice media center that better organizes all of your surround sound equipment, and it cleans your whole living room up, and it looks much better. And that's kind of what we have here is you go to a much more streamlined design in the proposed facility with better spacing. And, and I, I think obviously aesthetics can be somewhat subjective, but I think it, it improves the overall sight significantly in, in terms of, of visual aesthetics and impacts. Next slide, please. Here we have another photo sim from a different angle, and again, you can see the, the trees, and you can see the improvement of the site, again, getting to a more streamlined view with better spacing, without quite the clutter, which again, I believe improves the overall visual of the site and, and improves the overall view impacts and lessens them significantly. Next slide, please. Again, here is another view showing again the site improvements from another view angle. Next slide. I'll turn the time over to Daisy now at this time.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. Kathleen, can I please get a time check, please?
You have twelve minutes and eight seconds.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with, in front of you today with regard to this project. In this particular instance, Verizon is proposing to upgrade an existing wireless facility that is attached to a new replacement wood utility pool in the inland parkway of the public right of way on PCH. The existing pole itself was set in nineteen forty-seven with the wireless facility piece of it installed around twenty-ten. Verizon is proposing this upgrade to provide a capacity solution to improve service capabilities in the general area on PCH. The proposed small cell facility will be located on PCH. According to Caltrans in twenty-eighteen, there's about sixteen thousand seven hundred average daily traffic, daily trips on PCH at this location. Next slide, please. This slide shows that the existing pole is already at thirty-eight and is already exceeding the twenty feet requirement for height in this area. What Verizon's proposing is to the replacement pole to take up to fifty-two above ground level. Now, this is necessary to be in compliance with California's GEO ninety-five requirements and allow for proper spacing for safety reasons and structural reasons as well. Next slide, please. So the next two slides have already been raised in a letter that was sent to Planning Commission regarding our projects and the retroactive application of the city's code. Basically, what we're stating is that there's no retroactive application of the new code allowed under state law or federal law. Next slide, please. Similarly, there are federal and state preemptions with regards to showing the need for the wireless facility in the public right of way. So I won't read all of this. You already also got emails with regards to that, actually letters. Next slide, please. So as to the conditions of approval, as Tyler mentioned earlier, there are several conditions we're asking for modifications to. One is for condition number one, to add a reasonableness standard, which is a standard that is quite common, it's not unusual, while it may not be the standard in Malibu, it is not unusual. Condition number thirty, we're requesting the removal of this condition because this requirement of an agreement with the city does not apply here because we are not attaching to municipal infrastructure. We're attaching to a wood utility pole that is managed by the GPA or the Joint Pole Authority. Condition number thirty-one, we're asking for the time it's said for relocation, if needed, to be extended to not less than twelve months notice. As you're all aware, it does take time to get new permits. In addition to that, approvals have to be obtained with the Joint Pole Authority, and designs have to be revised, as well as other carriers and other providers, utility providers are on this pole. So they would also have to be consulted in the event of a relocation. Condition number thirty-seven, we're requesting the removal of any reference to future modifications and undergrounding, mainly because Verizon can only agree to condition of what we're submitting today. We, if we are to modify the site in any sort of way, we will usually go back to either planning commission or staff anyway for further approvals. So the staff and city would have the opportunity to review the project accordingly. Condition forty-three, this is the condition that talks about restoration. And with regards to if we were required to remove our equipment and restore to original condition, we would like to request that the restoration would be only to the condition prior to our equipment being installed. As mentioned earlier, there are other utilities that are on this pole. So we cannot restore the pole entirely back to its original, original condition, but just to the condition from which we added our equipment at this time. Time check, Kathleen, please.
One moment.
About nine minutes. Go ahead, nine minutes, nine seconds, I've got.
Okay. Oh, nine minutes left. Thank you, Kathleen. Next slide, please. Condition number fifty-two, so this is the new condition that was brought up with regards to adding, going to planning, going to plan check as an additional step once these projects have been approved. So this request is basically to state that the condition be modified, that the condition be consistent with whatever the requirements are under the CPUC general order ninety-five, being that this is a wood pole, and that only applicable requirements of the building code as adopted by the city of Malibu will be applied. As we all know, the California building code is very broad and covers mostly buildings and structures like that. This is a pole in a public right of way, so we're only requesting that the requirements that are applicable to poles in the right of way be, be applied here. With regards to condition fifty-four C, there is, we are not, we are not objecting to having the plant stamped and by a licensed engineer, nor are we objecting to most of the conditions on there, except for the one on C, which requires us to put a design plan stating the tower's capacity to accommodate multiple users. Verizon cannot design for something that we don't know what equipment to accommodate for. We, this is very speculative, we don't know who the carrier that would want to be on the pole, what type of equipment, what kind of weight. So we cannot possibly design for something that we don't know about today. Condition fifty-six, this is a replacement of one word instead of installation, or requesting for the word to be replaced to operation. With regards to this condition, this is the condition that talks about us doing a onsite field report once the site's on. We cannot necessarily do a field report just when the site's installed, but we can do it after when it's operational. So it needs to be operational for us to do a field report, not just installed. So we're requesting for that to be changed. And then final time check, please.
You have six, six and a half minutes.
Thank you, Kathleen. We would like to reserve the remaining six and a half minutes for rebuttal and for myself, Todd, Jared, and Kevin to answer any questions as needed. And thank you for the opportunity to present, present this project to you today.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen, who, who have we got?
We have Susan Foster.
Okay, open her up.
Chairman Jennings, I believe that Jenny was going to speak first.
Sorry, say again.
I believe that Jenny was going to speak first, comment and show a video. Is that Kathleen, do you have that? I believe Parker would have the video, and I do show Jenny has signed up to speak.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I, I would prefer to follow if that's possible.
Yep, all right, let's get going.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, okay, thank you. Hello, commissioners. Thank you all for all that you do to keep our city and us safe. I would like to play a video from just two months ago that shows what is at risk. Electrical fires in cell sites that can lead to harm of life and property. May we please play the video now?
We seem to be having some technical difficulties, give me a second.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't think there's any volume.
Yeah, Kathleen, this is very dramatic video. Take a look at this. Happened about seven-thirty at the O'Ty Ranch High School Stadium. Chula Vista Fire officials say the tower collapsed onto the bleachers and rubberized track, causing extensive damage, but fortunately, no injuries. Crews had to wait for SDG&E to get out there and turn off the power that was feeding that tower. Once that happened, the fire was finally put out. Investigators right now are still trying to determine what caused this collapse. No dollar.
Okay. Let's see, am I back?
You're back.
Okay, thank you. Thank goodness, this happened in the absence of a school game or function. May we please pull up the first photo?
The clock isn't running, Kathleen.
Okay. You've seen a lot of photos over the past nine months from within Malibu. But Lonnie Gordon just took these the other day, and after re-watching that enormous structure buckle, I needed to share these with you. May we have the next photo, please? Please notice the wire rat's nest in this photo. Next two photos, please. This is a corroded electrical enclosure for wireless equipment in Malibu. This is what happens when the design does not take Malibu's safety environment into account. This is a real safety issue for us in Malibu. Please, commissioners, do what you can and use the tools you have to ensure our safety. Please deny this permit and the next one in the agenda today as they are currently written. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Who's next, Kathleen?
We can go back to Susan Foster.
That's fine.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear you now, yes.
Okay, good. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the commission. My name is Susan Foster. I came to Malibu at the invitation of Mayor Pearson to prevent another Malibu Canyon Woolsey Fire. I then recruited Tony Simmons to help. The two applications we oppose on their face demonstrate that Verizon and its experts did not apply proper engineering rigor with regard to fire hazard prevention. As Tony Simmons explained in his signed and sealed engineering recommendation, the record presented to the commission fails to confirm that all electrical hazards have been evaluated and mitigated. When engineering rigor is not applied, this is what happens. The twenty-twenty Silverado Fire appears to be shared responsibility between SCE and T-Mobile due to a telecommunications lashing wire. In two thousand eighteen, a lashing wire belonging to an unknown telecom carrier appears to have been the cause of at least one of the two ignition points for the six billion-dollar Woolsey Fire, which destroyed over four hundred Malibu homes and cost three lives. The criminal investigation is ongoing. The two thousand seven Malibu Canyon Fire was caused by the failure of an SCE pole that was overloaded with telecom equipment owned by AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Sprint. All five parties involved eventually settled with the CPUC for over sixty million dollars. During the public comment, you just saw the cell tower collapse at O'Ty Ranch High School. That was on March ninth, twenty-twenty-one. It occurred as a result of arcing within a cell tower. Thank you, Alex, for the fire report. This is a fire report from the Chula Vista Fire Department, written by the incident commander. The fire report on page one clearly states the heat source from the electrical fire was arcing. A fault current occurs when the insulation system fails and allows electric current to travel along an unintended path. The fault current can lead to an electric arc, which starts fires and vaporizes metal by reaching four thousand degrees in one tenth of a second. As you can see, internal arcing caused the thick steel from that cell tower at O'Ty Ranch High School to collapse before SDG&E could even arrive on scene to inform the fire department that the power had been cut. Only then could they attack the fire. I have shown you what has happened and what can happen in the future in Malibu. And now, since neither Verizon nor staff performed their duties, you must do yours. Deny these applications and require a far more rigorous demonstration of safety. Malibu's safety and security rests in your hands. The planning commission is the only firewall standing between Malibu and another devastating fire. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tony Simmons.
Thank you. See if I can stop this.
Thank you. Can you bring up my slide, please? My slide presentation? Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Tony Simmons. I took some pictures in Malibu. I drove in from Las Vegas to take the pictures and drove back yesterday. Next slide, please. And we pose a question. This one here is rhetorical. Did the wireless communication facilities consultant miss some things during the final inspection on the site we're going to show you? Next slide, please. This right here shows a meter socket with a disconnect which went to the side of it. It poses the question, is this an Article ten or one-ten-three B violation? Next question. Next slide, please. We have a disconnect switch with no label. That's, that is the main switch for this pole. That is an Article two-thirty-seventy-B violation. That, that should be a question. Is this an Article two-thirty-seventy-B violation? Next slide, please. Okay, you will notice that right there, Article one-ten-twelve of the, of the NEC in the California Code require need and workmanlike manner. The thing, the stuff in the yellow circle does not appear to be a need and workmanlike to a professional engineer, and that gets to the issue of the lashings. So we need to understand what's going on there. Next, next slide, please. As we've talked about in the past, they had an over-voltage event in Stockton that caused over six thousand electronic against the failure. This right here is the same setup that caused the failure in Mal, in Malibu. Next slide, please. Commissioners, you have a duty to receive an answer to these questions before they approve any WCF application. The, you've been asked to approve applications based on the design, that the final design will meet all the codes. We have provided evidence that that has not happened. Anyway, I'm, I've, I've I want to thank you for your time and yield back my time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Scott McCullough.
Okay.
Hello, I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Hello, my name is Scott McCullough. I'm here representing Lonnie Gordon in opposition to the, this application and the one that follows. I'm going to have to touch on several things very quickly. First of all, I, I think everybody would like to know what's the shot clock deadline for these two matters? By my calculation, a hundred and fifty days from the time of submission is long past. So that tells me there's been a tolling agreement of some sort. It's been kept pretty good secret. We'd like to know when the shot clock's supposed to run, so that we can see if there's still some time to perhaps work through some of our issues. Staff has filed a response to our objection from the time this was carried over. And they have admitted now that they are not applying chapter twelve or to either of these applications, although they claim to have used discretionary power to insert some conditions wrong from them. Now, that's inconsistent with the council's direction in ordinance four-eighty-four, section six. Staff says that there's apparently some practice out here to not apply defining an effective ordinance. If the application has been deemed complete, that all that we hear is the reason comes from state law, apparently government code section six-nine-five-four-three. I read that statute, and all that deals with is application content requirements. It does not deal with substantive requirements. We don't understand why staff contends that the LIP can overrule the Malibu municipal code. Those are two separate codes. They deal with two separate types of permits, and they can provide for different things, just like is likely to occur when Verizon gets his Caltrans permit. it's his counterant permit. It may say something completely different. These are three separate permits, and that's obvious on the face of, of your agenda item where they list two separate permits. Now let me tell you how this is going to turn out. It may be a shock. Staff's going to tell you when you finally start doing ones where the application was deemed complete after December, that you still can't apply Chapter 12. And that will remain the case until your LIP is approved by the Coastal Commission. That means that all of our work over the last eight months has been worthless. It will never be put into effect. And I think there's a grand plan in Malibu by somebody to try to rush through a bunch of applications under the old rules, never letting the new rules fly. All I can tell you about the safety thing is you are required to make an affirmative finding that these things will be safe based on the evidence before you tonight. Future promises of code compliance will not cut it. You have to deal with the substantial evidence that is before you tonight. And you must make the findings based on that evidence, not on something that's going to occur months from now. We do not believe
Mr. McCullough, that's, that's your time?
And we respectfully request that you do your duty and deny these permits. Verizon has failed to carry its burden proof.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
Next we have Lonnie Gordon.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're on.
Okay, great. Hold on one second here. I actually was supposed to go before the three experts because I'm here as an opponent and I'm represented by Scott McCullough and the two experts Susan Foster and Tony Simmons. So I would like you to please give me party status and allow my representatives equal time with Verizon.
Those have been the rule. The rules have always been 15 minutes for the applicant, three minutes for anybody in the public who is speaking in opposition or in favor. And they've been that way for the last 30 odd years that I can remember, so.
So we should have 15 minutes?
No, you get three minutes.
When one formally intervenes and becomes a party with some procedural rights as to all other parties, so in theory you should give the same participatory recognition as that afforded to Verizon.
Ms. Gordon, you're, you're using your time. Do you have to make a substantive argument to us because I'm not going to
My, my time is given to Scott McCullough, Susan and Tony.
Well, you can't, it doesn't work that way. The rules are that if you have, you want to give, uh, one minute away, you can, but once you start to speak, you even lose that. So if you want to make an argument to us, uh, go ahead.
No, I'm finished. I've made my argument. Thank you. I, I, I know you don't want to listen. Thank you.
You know, fine. Is that the end of the speakers? Kathleen?
Yes, we have one speaker, Stephanie Sun Woo, who's left, and that would be the last speaker.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not, I'm not understanding you. You have one more left?
Yes, Stephanie Sun Woo.
Okay, let's open her up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good evening commissioners. My name is Stephanie Sun Woo and I'm a 22-year resident of Malibu and have been working alongside many longtime residents. We oppose both WCF projects that were postponed at the last meeting. As was said then, staff is not applying the urgency ordinance standards even though the ordinance expressly says they do apply, and it is not clear what standards they are applying. As a consequence, the wrong or at least not the right standards are being applied. Further, staff incorrectly waived the requirement to provide coverage maps. As a result, Verizon has not shown that the proposed facility is in the proper location and that the planned pole height is appropriate for the contemplated enhanced coverage. Nor has Verizon proven that the site will be used to provide personal wireless service as opposed to simply improving or adding coverage for solely private mobile service. Finally, and most importantly, the project must be denied because Verizon has not proven that the design is fully compliant with all fire, electrical, structural and other safety codes and will not present a fire risk or obstruction to the street if the pole falls. The commission must not approve this application until Verizon has proven that it meets all applicable standards and requirements. I am dismayed at how the staff is handling applications. We were so pleased with all the progress in the right-of-way and non-public, um, ROW ordinances and resolutions, although more work remains for each. But now staff is just taking it all away. I, I suspect that staff will next contend that the new ROW ordinance cannot apply even to ROW applications deemed complete after December 2020. And they may take the same position on non-public ROW applications. If the problem is the LIP's inconsistent provisions, then staff needs to tell us what the status is on coastal commission approval of the LIP amendment. And they must also be told to push harder for approval. Right now, staff is not applying the urgency ordinance and is not ensuring the facility will be safe and the facilities will not present risks or harm to life or property. Why did we and the council do all of this if the standards are not being applied? We request that the Planning Commission deny both applications. Thank you commissioners for taking on the responsibility of ensuring the safety of our lives and community. I look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, uh, the applicant team with rebuttal, six and a half minutes.
Okay. Who would like to speak for the applicant team?
Um, there's a couple of items commissioners. This is Daisy. Um, we can thank you. Um, just a couple of items that I wanted to raise, and I also want to see if Kevin wants to jump in at the end, um, uh, of my time. But basically, what, a couple of items that were brought up by, um, the residents. Um, one of them was just by Ms. Sun Woo where the pole height was not required for coverage. The pole height increase we're doing for safety reasons that for compliance with California CPUC 295. Um, that wasn't for, for coverage reasons. Um, and so I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, secondly, um, it was also raised about, um, all the examples and, and as far as the safety and fire requirements. I already indicated earlier Verizon will be, um, you know, getting these, uh, CDs basically signed and stamped by a licensed engineer. We did not object to, uh, any of the requirements that were added, uh, with regards to the plans. Um, in addition to that, um, I also wanted to state that the whole, um, one of the intents of this pole replacement is actually to give the city a newer, safer pole. One that meets all the safety requirements, one that meets the requirements with regards to the wiring so that it looks better, sleeker. Um, so in essence, what we're doing is actually giving the city a safer, newer pole. And one that they can check, a plan check. So, um, as far as all the requirements that, that have been added, mind you, at the 11th hour to Verizon. So, um, you know, just wanted to state that. And then with regards to everything else, um, Kevin, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything else?
Yes, thanks Daisy. Uh, good after, good evening Chair Jennings and members of the commission. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So the city's urgency ordinance from December 2020 does not apply here. Um, the city staff report, uh, both the original staff report and the supplemental staff report have addressed that. Government Code, Section 65943 states that uh, project, uh, application requirements and regulations with respect to a project apply prospectively only. And so you can't take an application that has already been submitted and deemed complete and then apply new regulations and standards to it under Californian law. So we are compliant with the applicable standards and regulations, uh, for this particular facility. In addition, as Daisy noted, uh, the facility applications are fully compliant with all applicable California Building Code provisions, Electric Code provisions and, uh, CPUC General Order 95 provisions, all of which are intended to, uh, protect and, uh, preserve public safety. Um, in a letter submitted, uh, that I submitted to the commission, uh, this afternoon, we also explained that Verizon, uh, is going to be, uh, utilizing personal wireless services at this facility. And then one last item with respect to the fire, uh, on a facility at O'Ty Ranch High School. I'm actually involved in that case. I represent AT&amp;T. Um, and I'm currently, uh, involved in their work with, uh, the O'Ty Ranch High School and related school district to get a replacement pole there. Um, that was a light standard, um, that caught fire and collapsed. The investigation was that the high school's faulty maintenance of the light standard caused the problem. There is no information, uh, after an investigation that the AT&amp;T or other wireless carrier facilities that were part of the light standards, uh, caused or even contributed to the fire. So what we're proposing here, uh, is not a light standard. Uh, it's a utility pole compliant again with all applicable codes and regulations. And we are available to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. Are there any more speakers Kathleen?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing on this item. We'll bring back to the commission table. I have one question. Mr. McCullough raised the question of when, uh, when's the shot clock run on this application? He feels that, uh, it should have run long since. Is there an answer to that that, uh, anybody can offer? Tyler, Richard?
Yeah, the shot clock, uh, is really tricky, so I don't want to give any specifics, but what I will say is that we have an agreement with Verizon to hear four items. And, uh, it is to our knowledge that that's the agreement that we need to abide to. And in June, I should say, I'm sorry, we need to hear four items in June. And so, um, that's what we need to abide to.
Okay, okay. Um, other comments? No hands? Craig, there you go.
I've got some questions for, that maybe for Trevor or possibly Gail, and then I have a few for Scott McCullough. Could we, Trevor, uh, as a group, if we wanted, uh, add a lot of cumulative 15 minutes to the opposing parties, uh, as per council policy number seven? For example, the way, uh, Michael Lustig was the community expert on, uh, STRs. Would, would there be any, uh, room to say, we could say that, uh, Scott McCullough would fall under that community expert category, or is that simply for council?
Well, that, the big difference with that is it's a legislative item. And actually, when we went, when we put through the, uh, wireless ordinances, you know, Mr. McCullough was granted, uh, extra time in a number of circumstances so that he could weigh in on that. And the theory being there, um, we're trying to get the best information we have out there about a legislative item. And there was a, you know, significant recognition, um, from a lot of community members and, and the council of uh, this, that there would be a benefit from having that happen. When we have an application before us, then we run into due process issues. So it's important that we treat everyone fair and among, and with the same rules. And so that's why I would not recommend, um, altering the published rules that we have for when there is a and there is a, when there's a hearing in this circumstance. And if they do appeal to the council, then it's a different situation where the appulant and the applicant then get equal time.
Right.
So, uh, but at the planning commission level, we stick with that, but you should be able to get all your, your questions answered. You know, the chair has discretion to, you know, um, ask questions of, you know, anyone. Um, or if you do through the chair to, uh, get that information. So I want to make sure you do get all that information.
Okay, next question. Your, your, what's your comment on the argument the opponents made that about jurisdiction, that the planning commission doesn't have original jurisdiction, so must remand to the planning director?
No. It, as you can see, under our current local coastal program, this type of facility requires a coastal development permit and those standards are in place, and that is to be determined by the planning commission.
Okay, then, uh, on regarding the standard of review, Scott McCullough suggests that, that we apply the higher, uh, standard from MMC 174606OD of clear and convincing evidence for any waivers, exceptions, variances, rather than the lower standard of technical evidence acceptable to the planning manager, which is stated in Municipal Code, Section 17.46. And, um, and so he's basically saying we need to be applying that higher clearance convincing evidence standard. Is that accurate or not?
Commissioner, yes, I understand the, the argument there, but, um, in this situation, the procedure we're under, we're, we're doing the coastal development permit from the planning commission under the LIP. And, um, if this was exempt from a coastal development permit, then, you know, the planning manager would be making those determinations under the, uh, the municipal code. But, um, where we are with this application is it does require coastal development permit under the standards that are in place there.
Okay, um, Tony Simmons made some claims that, um, for example, that the documents and the technical documents are merely preliminary. Um, and he suggested that that would be grounds for denial. And sort of similarly, uh, he pointed out that Verizon's engineer expressly disclaimed any opinion on electrical safety or code compliance. Is that grounds for denial and in effect that the application is not complete because they've called it preliminary?
Yes, I mean, I would defer that question to Gail or Tyler to talk about the, the technical details of what was submitted.
Okay, and maybe Gail could, could might answer that well, but I think it's more a procedural question about how, how complete does an application have to be?
I believe the application was complete here. That was what I was getting at, if, if there was some issue where we didn't get the information that was requested or there was a problem with it.
Uh, my understanding is that the, this is an application that staff deemed complete.
Notwithstanding that some of the documents are expressly preliminary. That's, that doesn't matter. As long as staff says complete, that's what we go with?
I think what, you know, you should be looking at is, you know, whether the evidence presented to you is sufficient for you to be, make the determination. If you need additional, you know, evidence about something, then, um, you know, let's, let's talk about that and, you know, um, you could ask the applicant or whoever, you know, about that, uh, if he has a particular concern about information.
Okay, okay, a couple of questions for Scott McCullough. If you can pull him in here.
Kathleen, can you open this mic? There you go.
Yes, I'm here. Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi Scott. Um, you, you said, you've said, quote, "There's nothing in the record proving that Verizon will in fact use these two facilities to support any personal wireless service." Can you explain to us without too much jargon, and, and, and I will avow that there's probably too much jargon in writing we got. How the provision of internet slash broadband data is not personal wireless service? What's the distinction?
As a matter of law, it's not. It's what the FCC calls an information service rather than a telecommunications service. Generally speaking, personal wireless service is voice and to some extent texting. Um, that is what Verizon needs to convince you that they will be providing through this facility. And our position in, in the papers that we submitted was that there was no such showing in the application. Now I understand it was a letter filed late today, but I was not favored with it. So I don't know what it says. But, um, you know, the point is they need to prove to you with sufficient evidence that they will be providing basically voice. And, you know, we would probably allow some text in there too. Um, using this facility as opposed to routing the voice and texting through a macro cell and using this facility here on PCH only for internet type services.
Okay, you, you, there was some difference in some of your writing between a personal wireless service and commercial mobile service. But is that? I'm not sure what that is, and is that a different question than personal wireless versus internet service? What's commercial mobile service?
Commercial mobile service is one type of personal wireless service. Uh, Section 332 of the Act has a definition of personal wireless service. It includes, but is not limited to, commercial mobile service. Commercial mobile service is, once again, however, basically voice and to some extent text.
Okay, and you said, um, since there's no coverage map, the planning commission lacks the evidence it needs to assess the pole replacement height variance and determine proper location. How, how, how is the, the, the coverage map relevant to our determination of uh, the height variance and locations? That, that comes through with, uh, uh, to me, those are under aesthetic and safety concerns that we have that discretion. How does the coverage map affect aesthetic and safety?
Well, it, it seems to me a legitimate question is, is this very location, uh, the one that they are proposing, I understand it's a modification. Um, but is this the correct location for this facility to be? Um, in order to obtain the supposed need of providing personal wireless service to the area that they say needs addition. to the area that they say needs additional or supplemented coverage? And we don't know that. And we cannot know until we see what their existing coverage is and why they say they need to supplement. The only way you can look at the proper location and indeed to some extent height is, you know, looking at what their coverage is at present. After all, they say they need to improve and supplement their coverage.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll leave it there for now. Let somebody else have a few bites.
Anybody else? John?
Yeah, I'd like to go to those provisions that Tyler wanted to add language to and take language away from, especially number thirty-one.
Okay.
Could see those?
Yep. You want to put the you put the slide up? Who's in charge of that? Alex, can you do that? It was the staff report.
There we go. That's fifty-four.
That's fifty-four.
One more.
Okay. The city will give wireless carriers six months advance notice for removal and relocation, but may provide less time. Six months from when?
Six months ahead of the time they need to remove.
Oh, so you just, you just, you do, as soon as you pick a time, you notify them and it's six months?
Six months before we would require them to remove the facility.
Okay, but who determines that?
Whenever the city would want to start the works up, if they're gonna widen the road or do whatever, they would, you'd tell them six months before they actually want that pole removed.
Okay, so my, one of my questions would be a lot of that stuff requires approval by us or somebody else. Would that be before or after it's approved? What happens if it's turned down?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. You know, I, I think there'd be two things that you would probably look at in that situation. One would be whatever plan the city was putting through, if it, you know, called for the removal of the, the pole, you know, that would you know, be part of the, the approval process for the city's project. And then I think there'd be abilities to get a, to use temporary facilities also if the, if Verizon was not able to move their poll or get their approvals in time to get into another location or to relocate them. Is that accurate, Richard, Tyler?
Yeah.
But my, my question really is when is the city certain that they're gonna do something? Isn't it at the time they receive their permit? The CDP?
That would be a good time for them to provide that notice.
So shouldn't we have something in this writing that has that? Because you can run into a situation where whatever the city wants to do is changed or we change it, or some, somebody else changes it, or the coast, it's appealed to the coastal commission, or blah, 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 blah. Shouldn't we have a specific time?
Well, it'd be harder to run it automatically, you know, based on an approval or something. That's why this is requiring us, the city to give notice of it. If you think that that's too long of a, of a lead, you could, you know, require three months notice only or something along those lines.
No, it's not that. It's, it's notice would be given to them to change it, to take it out, even though we don't have have approval for doing what we're doing, the city, I'm saying.
So, John, John, let me suggest something here before we go down the rabbit hole any further. Can we take a little straw vote and see whether there's any support for the kind of modification you have in mind?
Well, I'd really get the, I would rather get the answer of what the parameters are because
Okay.
They have to come to us to move it. Okay, and we don't even know what we're doing yet. And so they have to apply to us and, and going through our process. I look at as being a minimum of six months.
All right. So, so what is your suggested language, John?
Well, I'm trying to get language that's good for the city also. My suggestion language is six months from certainty, some kind of certainty that it's gonna happen.
Can you be, be a little bit?
Or, or we have to factor something in on how long it takes them to get permission. What happens if we say, okay, you got six months, but we don't give them permission till eight months?
Okay, so I, I'm trying to see if we can break through this. It's, it's ten minutes of ten. We have what?
Well, the reason I'm doing this is because we get this every week. If we can finally straighten it out, we don't have to spend all the time the other week.
I, I get that. And what, but what I'm concerned about is whether there are three votes to support what you're talking about. If there are, then we can work on the language, the specific language. If there are three votes, then maybe we need to move on.
So you're saying, suggesting if three of us don't want to take the time to fix it, then we just let it be done?
Yeah. No, if three of us disagree with you, John, which is not, it's not the same thing as not wanting to take the time.
But all I'm doing is asking a question of what the situation is.
Right.
If the city says, I'm, I'm gonna ask Richard, if the city says move it and we don't give them a permit to move it, what happens? You can't find something for some, somebody for something that you won't let them do.
They would, they would have to remove it and, and make their other facilities operate, you know, in a way that, that would continue operation or apply for a temporary permit. Or otherwise, we would ask the city to expedite processing of their permit. And the shot clocks, you know, it's, it's in the new ordinance, you know, the, the processing is, is much quicker too.
The suggestion is that we would give notice that they have to remove stuff. And then we wouldn't let them remove stuff. And then the question is what happens? And what, what happens then is they don't get penalized for not removing something that we won't give them a permit to do. I mean, it's, it's really not complicated.
I'm just trying to correct the language to say that. Whatever you want to say. This says you got six months or you lose. That's, all I need is some weasel words. So if we don't let them do it, then they get an extension or something.
I've been, I've been asking you if you have, you have any suggestions and your suggestion was six months from the time when the city knows what it's doing. I don't think that's precise enough, but
Okay, well, six months from when the city gets a permit to do what it's doing.
Maybe, maybe Commissioner Mesa, maybe a, a language would give the planning director ability to extend that period. If, if they have not obtained the necessary approvals to relocate the location.
That's fine with me. Just something that makes it sensible.
Trevor?
Sure, so we could say.
Trevor, give us what your suggestion is.
They could, we could add at the end of this, the planning director shall have discretion to extend this period.
Do cause?
I don't know if you want to, you say do cause if you want, but you may want to be more specific. Should the should the the applicant diligently pursue required approvals, but be unable to acquire them within the six month period?
Well, it's not talking, we're not talking necessarily about six months here. The, the basic thrust of the, of the thing is we'll give you six months, but if a car crashes and brings down the pole or whatever it is, if we need an emergency relocation, then we're gonna give you however much time we can give you.
Okay, so you can say that do cause, you can say just the, this period may be extended by the planning director for do cause.
Yeah, because it doesn't say anything in here about a, an emergency. That's fine with me. I, I make that motion that we amend it that way.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, we're just straw vote. We haven't, I have a motion, I think, on the table at this point, so.
We do have a motion on the table. John just made it.
Well, if anybody else, okay, I made the motion. If anybody else wants anything else to go in.
No, 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 that's just, that's just a little, you know, it's, it's not a definitive motion on this matter. It's just talking about what languages would be, would be put in there. All right. It's a hypothetical in a way, John.
So it's a straw vote, okay. Whatever you want to do, I don't care. I'm just trying to make it.
Okay, so let's, let's get a straw vote on John's motion. Craig?
I would like to, Jeff. I'd like to include this in all the next three we do tonight, so we don't have to do it again.
I, I get it. Thank you. I appreciate the concern. I don't think we're gonna be doing three of them, but go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, sure. As Trevor qualified, yes, and I, I have a few other things, but we'll get back to that.
Okay, David, how about you?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, and who else am I missing? Dennis? Dennis, where are you?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, fine. You got your votes. So now, did you want to talk further about those conditions? Or should we move on to the main event, the, the actual motion itself?
I think Craig has something.
Craig?
Yeah, I've got a few things. Both, well, first, before I get to some of the conditions. We've been told that, that a twenty-eight foot pole could work separately, that they could just put this all on its own pole. But we have a preference for co-location. And that puts us onto the fifty-two foot pole. And, and, and I think that preference, and somebody can stop me if I'm wrong, but I think that preference has to do with aesthetics and not having too many poles. But to me, then the question becomes one of aesthetics versus fire safety. Maybe somebody on the technical side of things here can answer. What is more, is, is it more substantially fire safe to put it on a separate twenty-eight foot pole than to have things on a fifty-two foot pole, understanding that, you know, we're gonna be looking at this a lot, and these, many of these are right next to the highway and people hit poles. I just wonder if this, the, the the onus we've put on co-location for aesthetic reasons, may, maybe we should be outweighing that and saying, let's put it on a shorter pole for safety reasons. What is, any, any, any technical comment on that? No, is there, who, who would, who would answer? Tyler or Richard?
Dennis.
I'm just guessing, first of all, that's not Verizon's pole. And they're gonna clean up the pole that they're gonna use. Edison owns the pole. Everybody's gotta go through Edison. Edison doesn't really like anybody, so nothing's ever gonna be easy to do something like that. They're gonna clean up the pole and make it better than what it is now. So on this particular unit anyway, so you know, let's let them clean it up. Let's get this done. Let them go.
Question of, is, is, is a twenty-eight foot pole substantially safer than a fifty-two foot pole with a bunch of different things on it?
Yeah, but back to the, it's not their pole. It's not their pole. They gotta go through Edison. They gotta go through the JPA. You gotta, you gotta talk to Caltrans if we start moving stuff around. It's not just, we're law and a totem pole here, although we'd like to say we're doing a couple of things.
I think what Craig is saying is that, you know, is it a basis for denying this application? Because there would be a safer alternative by putting it not on this pole, but on a, on a twenty-eight foot pole someplace else.
That's basically what I'm.
I think that the applicant has to demonstrate that. And, and we've seen that when two poles are really close to each other, that there's violations with what are called the the, I forget now, but it's the, there's the allowable limits for MPE to the general public, and there's allowable limits for occupational limits. And sometimes when workers of a utility pole cannot access the standalone facility and it's, it's right next to them, it may, that may actually increase increase sensitivity to that. So I, I'm not an expert on that. That's just what I've seen in the past. We have, as a staff, you looked at these as for aesthetic purposes. We don't want to see a, I don't think the public wants to see a whole bunch of poles, independent poles all over the place. And so we do prefer that they co-locate and it's actually the preferred method in the old standards which applied to this project. The standalone monopole is the least desired aesthetic.
Well, okay, so that's aesthetics.
I could add something. I just, I would just like to say that I, I think in, in a way, your answer is unknowable in, and also knowable. That there are safety standards, building code, electrical code, the general order ninety-five applies to utility poles. All of those things have to be complied with. So to the extent that there are standards in place that have determined what is a safe installation, that, that, there's not really a trade-off there in terms of whether a utility pole that complies with all of the standards and installation on that pole would be safer than an installation that's separate on, on a twenty-eight foot pole. I think where you did point to the one issue that, that could be maybe more knowable in, in terms of having more poles, having more things in the right of way. That means there will be more things that might get hit if there was an accident. But other than that, I mean, I, I don't think the trade-off is really, is, is one safer than the other. All of the installations should be complying with all the safety codes that are in place.
Okay, I'll move my next point in this, John.
John had his hand up, I mean.
I just want to, my point was yeah, more poles, more people can hit them. She made the same.
Yeah, okay. On, we've, we've assumed that painting these all one dark color is the aesthetic preference, but I wonder, a couple of things. To me, the one dark color looks very monolithic versus when you've got some broken up tones, different tones, as long as they're not like hot pink.
That was gonna, that's what I was gonna go for, caddy stripe.
So I, I, I wonder if that's desirable. And, and one thought I had was that, and, and maybe visualize the one at the located by the hill where Dennis did the grading by Tuna Canyon. That one's really easy to see. If you had a pole where the bottom part of it was maybe a darker tone or something like an earth tone, but as it got higher, it could blend, or maybe it's two tones and the, the higher parts of it could be a lighter tone that's more sky friendly. And to me, the notion of just painting everything really dark brown and putting it fifty-two feet up in the sky is kind of one of the most aesthetically like sort of bold statements. Here's our big dark pole here and may, maybe there's some kind of blending con, concept that, that could be applied here.
I, we have an application in front of us. Are you gonna want to suggest that that would be a condition?
That could be a condition, yeah. Now I guess we're under my potential conditions.
Okay.
Straw vote, maybe?
Well, let me ask you a question real quick. We were told last time that there's only so many kinds of poles they can use and is there a pole with a light top and a round bottom?
I think you would just paint it, right? You're looking to have them paint it.
I don't know if they're allowed to do that. It's not their pole.
Isn't it Edison's pole?
Yes, it's Edison's pole. And to give you guys an example of how quickly Edison reacts to all this. Remember when the Porsche took out the pole out there that the West End by this? It's still not replaced. The piece of the pole still ain't in the Caltrans right of way. Nobody's doing a damn thing. That wire has dipped so much now. The, the regulation is seventeen feet really from, from the ground. It runs parallel with our highway, but other than that, nobody cares.
Trevor?
Yeah, we're, we're, I mean, we're approving the, the, what the pole's gonna look like here, regardless of who owns it. We can bring in Verizon if you think there's a, an issue with his proposal. But I just want to be clear about what you're looking for, Commissioner Hill. Was it, that it be painted sky blue above the tree line? Is that, is that the?
Not necessarily blue, just saying that what, what, we've, we've assumed that one monochromatic, monolithic dark tone is somehow better. And I don't, I don't think that's necessarily true.
Okay, if you want it something different, though, you need to tell them what you want it to be. What you see as an aesthetic superior alternative, that it's a different color than.
A simple way to be, would say to like more earth tone towards the bottom and more sky tone towards the top.
You want to leave the discretion with the staff to work that out?
Yeah, yeah.
But you want to ask Daisy? She's sitting there. Craig?
Did she hear?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Does that sound crazy?
How do you feel about sky tone, Daisy?
I, I hate to call any idea crazy, because.
Oh, go, go right ahead.
Go right ahead. I can take it.
It's all subjective. However, I guess I just kind of throw this back to the staff in the sense that I thought the intent of the code was for us to blend in with the environment, right? And so if we would have a different looking pole with a different color scheme, then everything else is on the right of way that are wood utility poles, then we would definitely not blend in. So I, I just throw that out there. You know, that would be, that's why we.
Have a pole that looks normal up to thirty-eight feet and then the top part of it is sky tone. Part that, that isn't the same height.
Daisy, is there any? Daisy, is there any problem with that conditioning if the commission finds it to be the superior aesthetic version?
Yeah, I would say there's a problem, because we do have to get permissions, you know, as, as indicated in this conversation, right? So that's one. Secondly, um, you know, SCE controls whatever we do on the pole. Um, thirdly, uh, there's, as far as, you know, color scheme, you know, we just usually follow paint match requirements, right? So as close as possible. So, um, yeah, I just, it would be, I, I wouldn't even know, like, how we would implement that just because I don't see SCE giving us permission to do something different to their pole that's not seen or done anywhere else.
I, I, I'm not sure that, that there's, that there's support for the idea anyway. So let's, you wanna take it, Craig, you wanna straw vote on it?
Can I ask a quick question?
Let me, let me get an answer to this first. Do you wanna straw vote on it?
Sure, yeah.
And John, what's your question?
Can we refer this to our, uh, consultant to see, to come back with a report on, can you, uh, design? Before we decide it, we can have someday come back and say, yes, you can mess with the pole.
Okay, let's see if there's, let's take a straw vote and see whether there's support for the idea at all.
In terms of, to the extent feasible, you know, if you wanna.
Right.
If we, let's, let's.
Refer this to our pole colorist.
The extent.
I don't, I don't support, I don't support the issue. David, how about you?
No.
Dennis?
No.
Okay.
John. Okay, so we're done.
All right, next, next thing. One resident asked in writing if, if we could require Verizon to clean up the mess of lines strewn all over the highway, blah, blah, blah. My sense is that lines strewn maybe like cable companies and different things, but is, is there any scope here to call for some kind of cleanup or something that's not already in it? I mean, just sort of responding to the resident's concern about.
It would be part of this application, but I know Richard knows about this issue. I think it's already.
Okay, okay. Um, next.
You wanna address it?
Sure, the, the hard part is exactly what Commissioner Hill just mentioned, is that some of those lines are not affiliated with the cell towers. It, and I'm sure we were to pose this question to Daisy, this is what she would say. In some cases, those lines are the local cable providers, internet service providers. Uh, so it's one of those things where, I, I don't think would be proper. I mean, we could definitely uh, put a condition on there that Verizon, uh, you know, be sure to maintain what is theirs. Uh, but I think on the other, the other infrastructure that's on that pole, we would need to do some research to figure out who's actually owns that infrastructure.
Well, maybe that fits in with my next potential condition, that, uh, looking at that slide of that corroded box and thinking about the elements here in Malibu and the fog and salt air and so forth. Is, is there some call for a specifying some rigor in their maintenance schedule that might be different than, than elsewhere in, in town, or, you know, something, some sea-air corrosion check every certain amount of time? Or is there some way to accommodate for our unique environment in their maintenance schedule?
Richard, do we have anything that says the equipment shall be maintained in a clean and warp-in-like manner, free from corrosion? Something along those lines? Is that in there already?
Yep. That's a condition that they need to properly maintain their facility, and I believe we also have a condition that they need to provide with annual reports. I have to triple-check that one, but uh, of the facilities.
What number is that? I wanna look and see if the word convotant is in there.
Let me, uh, let me get to it real quick.
I will tell you that I agree with Commissioner Hill on this, because somebody needs to go through and start changing that stuff out. I agree.
Yeah.
As for the one that Mr. Cinco mentioned, I believe it was her, um, that one was reported to staff, and we reached out to the applicant to upgrade their equipment, or to change out their equipment, I should say. All right.
Okay, so.
By the way, if I, while we're waiting for an answer, a lot of the times, those loops you see that everybody thinks are just a mass of wires, those are five rocket cables that, that are a lot easier to extend when you have a problem than to splice.
There you go. Good job, Commissioner.
There is, while we're waiting for the answer, across the street from my house, there's a, my ex-house, there's a field uh, where the, uh, Frontier or Verizon, whoever was, uh, restrung the wires up and down Merritt Drive and Bush Drive, and they left a ton of stuff just sort of lying there in the weeds. Uh, the guys who was mowing, uh, the field, uh, for the school district came by in a, in his, with a brush hog, ran over that cable. You should have heard the words he had to say, but there was a ton of, it, it looked like a, a rat's nest that he gathered around the blade of his brush hog. Okay, uh, why don't we go on, Craig, if you've got more of a suggestion?
Yeah, one more, and I just, on the condition forty-four A about who has jurisdiction, the city or Caltrans, it seems to me that, that it's a situation of concurrent jur- jurisdiction, and there's no reason that they should not be answerable to both local and state agencies. I mean, we're, we're saying it's not us, it's, it's Caltrans. Why, why don't we retain authority too?
I don't think we ever had it, did we?
Not on our road. It's not our easement. We don't own PCH. We don't own the right-of-ways from side to side. We don't, we, nothing. We're always nothing.
But our code is in play, so it seems like we have some authority that we don't necessarily wanna just give up, right?
That's the condition numbers.
I've, I've heard for thirty-one years, the, the highways, Caltrans, we don't have to deal with. It's a good excuse sometimes.
I'm not saying it's an excuse, Commissioner Mazza. I'm just telling you it's reality, and it's, we, we, we don't have any say over it. I wish we did. I wish we did.
Okay.
All right, I'll leave it there.
We, we have the, the condition numbers. Um, so forty-nine says the site and facility must be maintained in a neat and clean manner in accordance with all approved plans and conditions of approval. And then we have number twenty-three, which states uh, an operation technician is required to conduct regular annual maintenance visits to verify that the wireless communication facility remains in compliance with the conditions of approval and safety requirements.
So, so the question might be, uh, whether annual is, is frequent enough in, in our circumstance.
There you go.
You know, maybe it's every six months. I don't know.
You're gonna check them?
Yeah, the question is, how do you know whether the maintenance has been done enough? But let, let me raise an issue that, that has been troubling to me, and, and that is the opposition, it seems to be that, well, they haven't proved that it's going to be a- absolutely safe, as safe as it can be, or as safe as whatever the standard is. And it's, you know, when we deal with these issues, what we typically say is we're, we're a planning commission. We deal with planning issues. And, uh, when you go to build whatever it is you, that's been approved, you then go to the technical people who tell you whether it's safe or not. And, and I'm not sure why this should be any different. Um, or at least I'm, I'm, it seems to me that, I, I don't think, I don't think at a planning application you can make the case that this is going to be at, at, you know, up to some level of sa- safety standard. Uh, it just seems to me that that's, that's the building and safety function that comes afterwards. And from Tyler's proposed conditions, we have written that in, that, that, that has to be, you have to have engineer-stamped plans. You have to then, you know, submit them and have them reviewed for fire safety and all the rest of it. Is that, am I misunderstanding something? Isn't that what you're proposing, Tyler?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct, uh, Chair Jennings. And I just wanna add that the, the rigorous standards that they're referring to, those weren't part of the original application. Those are, there's something in the new ordinance that we, we have to utilize in the new checklist. I wanna also verify something that was said by the members of the public. We are applying the new rules to everything that was submitted after the adoption of the new ordinances, so I can assure you that, or we are applying the new standards and, and using, making sure, making sure they submit all the new requirements. Uh, so I just wanna give you guys assurance about that.
Okay, and, and, and on that score, uh, the, the, the idea that, that, that you don't change the rules once the application is in is, uh, has been the rule, I don't, it may be the rule in California, it may not, I don't know. But it's ruled in Malibu and always has been the rule in Malibu, uh, from the very beginning. Because the problem is that, uh, if you can change the rules once the application is in, then why do you need a zoning code at all? You just say, make your application. If we like it, if we like what you're doing, we'll change the rules to, to fit what you're doing. And if we don't like it, we'll change the rules to make sure you can't do it. Uh, Craig?
Can I get a straw vote on my, I think if we were to say six months on the maintenance inspection period, that would, that would potentially save some hazard if we're talking about a fire season in a pole that's suddenly out of spec because something corroded or some wire came loose and is shorting or whatever.
Okay, so, I, I will, Tyler, that's, that's what, what condition is that again?
Number twenty-three.
Yeah. Sorry?
Twenty-three.
The maintenance, the maintenance condition?
Number twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
And that's only, that's only for their equipment, correct? If it falls on by somebody else, some other inspection regime, regime is in place.
True, but they would at least, you know, if the guy climbs up and he sees that something's fishy on Edison's pole, presumably he'd report that.
Okay, so the, the proposal then, uh, Craig, would be an oper- an operation technician is required to conduct regular semi-annual maintenance visits to verify. Is that right?
It sounded like the languages was good, except it said annually, and I thought maybe if we increased that to six months, that would, that would.
That's what I just did, semi-annual.
That only applies to this, this particular pole.
That's right, to this project, this project.
We, that's something we could, we could fit into future applications.
Yes, but only, but this one only applies to this project. So you were asking for a straw vote on that. I support it. David?
Yes.
Dennis?
I support it.
Okay, John?
Yes, can I ask, ask real quick question?
Sure.
Just to save the, uh, the public's questions on all this, they basically won when they got their ordinance, in my opinion. When, when do we run out of the old ones and start the new ones? Or how many more do we have? Approximately twenty, a hundred? How many were approved by December twentieth or deemed complete? And how many are left?
For CDPs-wise, there was about ten. We're about, if we can get through the ones, well, after we get through the ones that we're supposed to go tonight, um, we'll be about halfway, or, or more than halfway, about sixty percent done with the ones that were deemed complete.
So five or six are left to go. And then they can apply their new rules. You guys can.
The ones that were submitted after the, yeah, we're applying them to all the new, the new applications.
Okay, that should give them some solace.
Okay, so, um, can I get a motion to try to, somebody craft a motion? All right, I'll try it. I'm gonna move the staff recommendation with the, with the changes and conditions proposed by staff with the addition that over the change that, uh, condition twenty-three would require semi-annual inspections.
And the change.
I wasn't, I, I wasn't persuaded by the, by Verizon's argument about the other changes they wanted in, um, in, uh, the staff suggested conditions. Are there other, uh, Trevor?
Got the straw vote on Commissioner Mazza's, uh, addition that allows the planning director to, um, to extend the six-month, um, deadline.
Right, sorry, yeah. Uh, so including, uh, uh, the suggestion that the planning director can extend that notice period, uh, as, um, as you stated. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Can you call the roll, Kathleen?
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Because the coverage supplementation is, hasn't been demonstrated that this is the right location, I'm gonna vote no.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That was panelists. Um, let's go on to four D, is it? Uh, four D, yes. It's now, before we do that, it's now ten fifteen, and, uh, and I'm going to move that, um, that, um, five B, the Malibu Country Inn, five C, five D, and five E be continued to, what are we doing? That, that, that June thirtieth meeting? Richard, is that it?
That, that's correct. I'm just a little concerned that we're gonna end up with, we have.
Richard, do you just wanna move the, the wireless ones to that, and then the others to the following meeting?
Sorry, then apologize for my stuttering over here in Stammering. Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay.
I think that we could wireless to the thirtieth, and I, I think that five B, um, we could put that one on either July nineteenth or the first meeting. I, I know the applicant's not gonna appreciate this, uh, but the first meeting in August due to workload of the commission.
Okay, so if we move the wireless to the thirtieth and we move five B to the nineteenth, where is, where is Norm's project supposed to come in?
Norm's project? The thirty.
Thirtieth?
Yes.
And, and Richard, did you say that, that we got a lot of stuff on the nineteenth, so we should move, move five D to, be to, uh, whatever the next one is?
So on the nineteenth, you already have about four hearings, uh, because we continued items from the last, the, the last planning commission meeting to that meeting. So you've already got about four hearings on that agenda.
Plus, we have a special meeting, so I prefer to do that, move it forward.
You would prefer to move it to the, what, the second meeting?
One after the nineteenth, whatever that is.
August, the first meeting in August? Or no, there is a special meeting, isn't there? Though that was for something else. Uh, Dennis, yes?
Is there any way that the rest of the wireless be done tonight? Because we just did the roadmap. It's all written out now. So I know we have to do each one separately. Why can't we just do them separately and get this done?
The rule is that we stop at ten thirty. We don't take a new item after ten thirty. Um, you wanna flog yourself to death? We can do, we can, we can always change the rule.
I prefer not to change the rule, because every time we do, we make huge mistakes because we're tired. I mean, we do.
All right, so, why, why don't we, look, we, we got a motion. I'm not, I'm not sure I remember what it is. We're going to, we're going, I think Trevor will state it for me.
Sure. The, the motion, I believe, is to move items five C, five D, and five E to June thirtieth, and move five B. Then you were debating between July nineteenth or the first meeting in August. I don't know which one gives your preference.
Well, I tell you what, in, in the, uh, let, let me see this. I, I don't wanna take a vote on that motion if there's a, if there's a, a majority on the commission that wants to waive the ten-thirty closing time and, and drive right on to, um, to try to hear all those. Uh, what's your pleasure, Craig?
Um, a quick review of what the remaining Verizon items are and whether, just list them off quickly, do, do we?
Yeah, you have, uh, this, this next one, which is four.
E.
Four D.
Four D, then five C, D, and E. So you have four or more applications.
And I kind of agree with Dennis that we've, we've, we've laid a lot of the roadmap, but I also think there may be a few unique comments on each one. So I don't know, I'm, I could.
Well, we, we, the, the thing about it is, is that we've got fifteen minutes of, of, uh, applicant, uh, presentation, and however much the public wants to weigh in on it. So, uh, it, it could get out of hand. My preference is to stick with our rules and stop at ten thirty.
My preference is.
And John says that, and David says that. Okay, that's three votes.
And I'll click off. If you guys wanna keep going, I'll just click off at ten thirty.
Uh, so.
If that's a promise, then I wanna do all of it.
All right, so that's my motion. Uh, it makes sense now.
You wanna move five B to July nineteenth or the first meeting in August?
First meeting in August.
First meeting in August.
Okay.
That would be the second.
Five C, D, and E to Ju- June thirtieth, and then five B to the first regular meeting in August.
Right. That's my motion.
I agree. I second it.
I second it.
I agree.
Kathleen, call the roll, please.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so let's move on to four, whatever it is, four D, is it four?
Senator Tyler.
D, yes. Wireless communication. This is the one on Canaan Doom Road.
Well, uh, question?
Yes?
I, I know we have to.
I, I know we have to do them separately, but to the extent that whatever presentations are gonna be made are either identical to or virtually the same as what's just been said, can we sort of short circuit it that way by asking them that question?
We can always ask.
Okay.
Ask them what?
Ask if they said, you remember what we said last time, don't you?
Yes, do you have anything to add to what you said the half an hour ago, when you made the presentation?
According to Trevor, we still have to do them sequentially, correct?
You know, I'm, I, I agree.
All right, let's, yeah, we, we have to do it.
Can they just say ditto to what I just said?
If, if that's, if, if that is their inclination, they're certainly entitled to do that. Um, let's get the staff report, please.
And Commissioners, we'll look into see if we can consolidate the hearings for the, the remaining wireless items as well. There's any ability to do that at the next meeting.
Staff report, please.
All right, um, yes, good evening, Chair Jennings again, and members of the Plan Commission. Uh, next item is another replacement wireless communication facility installed by Verizon Wireless located on Canaan Doom Road in the public right-of-way. Next slide, please. The project is located on the land side of PCH. I'm sorry, this is the wrong one, but land, the project is located on, on, uh, the Canaan Doom right-of-way, and it is outside the California Coastal Commission Appeal Jurisdiction. Next slide, please. The project proposes a replacement utility pole and replacement wires, wireless communication facility, which includes the removal of one pole that houses the existing facility, a replacement forty-eight foot tall wooden utility pole and utility infrastructure, uh, mounting two replacement panel antennas onto the replacement pole, mounting new electrical, a support equipment onto the replacement pole, and installing one new ground-mounted backup battery unit visually screened with a steel cage. Uh, next, uh, I'm sorry, the application requires a variance for replacement streetlight, uh, or replacement utility pole over twenty-eight feet in height and a site plan review for the operation of a wireless facility in the right-of-way. Next slide, please. Site plan here showing the existing pole location, uh, and the replacement pole. The replacement pole will be just northeast of the existing utility pole in the same whole set as the pole that hosts the current wireless facility. Uh, the wireless facility requires a site plan review to be in the right-of-way. Next slide, please. There's an existing elevation. The current pole height of the replacement utility pole is thirty-nine feet tall. Next slide, please. The proposed replacement pole will increase to a maximum of forty-eight feet tall. Application requires a variance because it's over twenty-eight feet and taller than the replacement pole. Staff was able to make the findings for the variance, uh, no view impacts are anticipated. Staff checked for primary view determinations within a thousand feet. One was discovered, however, you cannot see the existing pole and it's not anticipated that you'll be able to see the, uh, proposed pole either. The increased height is necessary to meet the CPUC, uh, separation requirements. Next slide, please. Here is a photo simulation of the existing proposed site. Uh, as, as said before, the existing site has two poles, and the application before you is reducing it to one. The new facility will meet the camouflage requirements. It will be painted brown to match the utility pole, and the ground-mounted equipment, uh, will be screened and painted green to match surrounding vegetation. Next slide, please. The same conditions will apply to this project, uh, as are the others, and we can definitely make the other changes that were proposed. Um, and except for the one that was the Caltrans authority, this one's in city, uh, public right-of-way, so Public Works Department will be the one for, uh, an encroachment permit. And with that, staff recommends adopting resolution twenty-one forty-nine, approving the project as condition, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, disclosures, Craig? You're, you're muted, Craig.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I visited the site, uh, did see that there, the place where there is a house burnout is in the planning process now to rebuild right on site, so there is a house next to this pole.
Below it, correct?
Say again?
It's below it, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's down the hill.
Okay, David?
None.
Dennis?
None.
And John?
Uh, I drove by and, uh, uh, from the top of the hill to see if it, it cut off the ocean and seemed fine to me.
None for me. Um, okay, so let's open the public hearing. We got, uh, I assume Todd and Daisy again?
Others correct. And then we have some members of the public, um, pretty much the same people as before.
Okay. Todd and, uh, and/or Daisy, you have fifteen minutes. You can, uh, save as much as you want for rebuttal. And, uh. As a.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Could make it, yeah, we can, we can hear you.
All right, perfect. Um, yeah, can you go to slide three, please? Again, this is very similar to the one you just reviewed. Uh, just a couple of quick points. The question with regard to nearby residences, uh, Canaan Doom is a, is a designated a major arterial, uh, in the City General Plan. Uh, the nearest residence could be or will be potentially downhill about seventy-five to eighty feet away. Um, it, it's, it's significantly downhill, and all the other residences are a football field or more, three, four hundred feet away downhill with trees and other obstructions. Um, so this is a pretty secluded site on a very busy street. Um, next slide, please. And again, you, you, you see, I'll just kinda ditto the previous. Um, you get a much cleaner, sleeker, better organized and safer facility as an end result, and I, I happen to think that the painted brown works really well, uh, in terms of view shed impacts being diminished and blending. Uh, next slide, please. Here you see it again, uh, the changes really do clean up the site. You get rid of the buddy pole, and, and you have a, a, a better, less impactful and, and a safer facility in the end. Next slide, please. And here's a, a final view that really shows, uh, how much it's decluttered and, and basically spread out to safe distances. Again, that makes a better, uh, more improved facility. Next slide, please. I'll turn the time over to Daisy.
Hello, good evening again, Commissioners. We'll try to go through this part really fast. So this is another upgrade to an existing wireless facility. Um, it's a wood utility pole in the public road at Canaan Doom. The existing pole has been there since nineteen seventy-nine with the wireless facility installed roughly around twenty-ten. Um, again, it's an upgrade, um, to provide a capacity solution and improve service in the area. And as Todd mentioned, that this is a major arterial, arterial road with quite a bit of traffic as well, so we would like to, uh, continuing coverage and actually improve coverage in this area. Next slide, please. The existing pole already exceeds twenty-eight feet. It's at thirty-nine currently. We are proposing for it to go up to forty-eight, again, for the same reasons as previously stated. Uh, it's mainly for structural and safety reasons and compliance with California CPUC General Order ninety-five. Next slide, please. So this is a ditto, same argument as before. Next slide. Ditto as well, same arguments as before. Next slide. So with regards to the conditions, they're pretty much similar, except as the, as noted by Tyler, that this is, um, in, uh, Cal, um, I won't go into the specific, but it's, this is specifically City of Malibu, so we will be going through encroachment permit process in addition to the building planning process. Next slide. So ditto on the conditions in the other slide, and then on this slide, for the most part, as well, is the same thing. It's ditto, um, because, uh, the same arguments apply to the same wood pole type of installation. So, uh, Verizon is available, uh, to answer any questions with regards to the specific site. Uh, again, we are trying to improve this location as well as, um, make it safer, um, and accommodate for better, um, wireless facilities. Thank you for your time. We're open for questions.
Thank you very much. How much time is left, Kathleen?
Eleven minutes and eighteen seconds.
Okay, we reserve that, and then we'll, uh, go to the public. Um, we have the same order, Jenny Resenko?
Oh, yes. We do have her listed, yes.
Okay, you wanna open her up?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Um, I know everybody is tired and it's late, so I'm going to cut this short a little bit. Um, I just wanted to speak to you again, um, as a concerned Malibu resident, but more poignantly as a resident who is personally affected by this Canaan, um, upgraded or replacement facility. I received the City of Malibu's pink notification that I reside within five hundred feet of the Canaan installation. And, um, after having gone through the Woolsey Fire and knowing that, um, Canaan was a main artery for that fire, um, of course, um, fire safety is of utmost concern to me. So I just wanted to implore you Commissioners to please for this particular application and for any future applications that you just please do not approve them without adequate demonstration of safety and code compliance, please, and thank you. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next, we ha- have Susan Foster.
Okay, Susan.
Okay, Chairman Jennings, thank you. I stand by my earlier comments. They apply to this uh, application just exactly the same, and so I'm going to defer to Tony Simmons and Scott McCullough.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Tony Simmons.
Okay, one thing, um, I've noticed about these proceedings is that the planning department has put you guys in a bad position by not having the, not requiring the designs to be sealed, you know, completed and sealed before they bring them to you. Um, I've been in a similar situation. I worked for the utilities in Nevada. I've worked, I've, I've been at this for five decades, and I've worked in, uh, California, Nevada, Illinois, Indiana, Kentucky, Ohio, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Texas. And the process in Malibu is absolutely aberrant. Never have I seen any organization that would defer engineering review to the end. We always try to do it as quickly as possible, quickly but thoroughly, and we wanna get it out and get our feedback as quickly as possible, so that we don't have any kind of delays in our project. I just think you guys underneath understand that you guys can request, uh, strongly request that the documents they provide to you uh, demonstrate that the installation is safe before they bring it to you. I yield back the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Scott, I think was next?
Correct, Scott McCullough.
Hello again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, okay. I'm gonna try to expand a little bit on a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I, Mr. Eaton proved one of my earlier points about what's gonna happen down the road. Um, one of you asked about applications not yet deemed complete when the ordinance was, was, um, promulgated, and the answer you got from him was, we are going to apply the ordinance to applications filed after the ordinance. So what we're gonna end up seeing here is that when you start seeing applications that were already on file but not yet deemed complete in December, staff is gonna take the same position. And I suspect that when you start seeing applications that were filed after the ordinance was promulgated in December, but before Coastal Commission approves changes to your LIP, they're gonna say you still cannot apply the same order. So while, yes, we are very thankful that the city filed past those ordinances, I have real doubt that we're ever gonna see it implemented and made effective and applied to any wireless applications for a very long time. Second, tolling agreement. We asked for the package in these two cases, and there was no tolling agreement contained in those packages. They should have been in those packages. There is no reason for it to have been accepted from a public information request. Staff purposefully excluded it, obviously. We would like to see these tolling agreements, because we need to be able to determine what the relevant dates are, as do you, I suggest. That secrecy is highly inappropriate. Now, when I keep talking about applying substantive standards to the ordinance, I'm not talking about the application content requirements. I'm talking about the substantive standards. And the statute that they keep citing only deals with application content requirements. You're, you're asking a question and getting an answer that is non-responsive. You have every right tonight to deny these two permits, not because the application was incomplete, but because Verizon has failed to carry its burden of proving that it is entitled to these permits, and in particular, because Verizon has not tonight proven that these facilities will be safe and up to code. You have before you a proposed finding, C four. The proposed project will comply with all applicable requirements of state and local laws, including all the codes. You cannot make that finding tonight. You do not have the evidence to make that finding. There is no evidence that it will comply. There is a promise that sometime in the future Verizon will give information to staff that it may or may not look at, may or may not assess, and may or may not enforce. You will not ever see that information. The public will not ever see that information. My expert will not ever see that information. The record before you today compels you to deny these two applications. Verizon has failed to carry its burden of proof that it will comply with all applicable codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Bonnie Gordon?
Yes, next we have Bonnie Gordon.
I think that Scott summed up nicely what I was going to say, so I will not take any more of your time this evening. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And we have finally Stephanie Sun Wu.
Sun Wu?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I don't wanna take up that much more time either. I just wanted to reiterate that, um, I just really, really, um, um, thank you for taking on this hu- huge responsibility of ensuring our safety. Um, ta- taking care of us with all the fire risks that Malibu has is not a small task, so I thank you and I urge you to do all that you can to give us the best, um, highest, strictest standards possible. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else, Kathleen?
Uh, no, we just have, uh, eleven minutes and eighteen seconds for rebuttal.
Okay. Todd or Daisy?
Hi, um, thank you for, um, the remainder of the time, Commissioner. Uh, I just wanna just quickly state a few things. First of all, we would not be able to build any of these sites without going through, um, plan check as required. Um, we will be submitting stamped and signed drawings as required, um, as was shown with the previous project. And I also wanna clarify that these sites, um, do provide, um, voice, text, and data, just like anything else. They already provide that today because they're existing sites. So just wanted to add all that. And, um, we're available for any questions. Our team is here. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public hearing. We're back at the commission table. Who would like to go first?
I will.
John?
Yeah, um, one real quick question. Canaan is a state highway designated and patrolled by the, uh, Highway Patrol. How did, uh, Malibu get authority over it? Isn't it? Caltrans?
No, you remember back in the day when, uh, we became a city? And, uh, the state said, all right, all right, if you wanna become a city, here, here are all these roads. And they gave us Canaan Doom, among others. So then when it collapsed, you remember that, John?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I just wondered how we got Highway Patrol then. Okay.
I don't, I've never seen the Highway Patrol on the, in the Malibu side of it, but go ahead.
Uh, can we get an answer on Scott McCullough's comments about us getting the information first or plan check? Doing it, and do we have anybody in plan check who knows anything about telephone poles and electronics and all that stuff?
Sounds like one for you, Richard.
Yes, Tyler and I, we're the ones to answer that one. And so I'm gonna let Tyler jump in here, but yeah, so it is the, the standard practice here, not just with uh, wireless facilities. Uh, it's not that, uh, as I think it came up earlier in the meeting. Uh, it's not that, uh, as I think it came up earlier in the meeting, staff just decides you guys don't need these drawings. It's that our standard as a city has always been to request essentially preliminary drawings that uh, suffice for the planning stages. And in addition to that, I should also state that if you notice, the majority of the plans that come before you for homes do not even have an architectural stamp. And that's because for the purposes of the planning process, uh, we don't require an architectural stamp. Now, once something gets to plan check, uh, that is where the city has always historically required that everything have the appropriate stamp. So uh, architecturals are stamped by an architect or an engineer, and the same holds true with this one. Uh, Tyler, would you like to speak about the, the plan check process as we've worked with building and safety?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Richard. Um, so I will say that planning staff doesn't have the electrical or structural engineers on, on staff to, to even review those plans anyway. And so we, like Richard said, we've always deferred to them. Uh, they do have the electrical and structural engineers on staff to make those, uh, to review plan check process. And then additionally, I do want to confirm that there will also be, uh, since permits are being pulled, there's gonna be final inspections to make sure that these are uh, built to how they were permitted. So there's a, there's a multi-level process, and then also as Daisy had mentioned, there's also, there's also uh, different agencies that are reviewing these things. So the California Public Utilities Commission, uh, SOCA Edison has to approve the design on their pool. So there's a multiple layers of review that go into this. As for the city's perspective, like Richard said, we always defer to building and safety for the structural and electrical safety requirements. And that's um, that, that was appropriate also for, for this, for these projects.
Okay, so they're not farmed out. We do it in-house. Okay, well, thank you very much, and I want to thank you, all, everybody who spoke for heeding our request, to be sure.
Uh, other comments? Yes, Craig?
Yeah, first off, this is for the Verizon team. Please, the next time we see a presentation, can we see uh, views comparing the two poles that are at the same scale? The last two things we've looked at, you've shown the, the old pole in uh, portrait mode and the, the new pole in, in landscape mode and made it look like it's two-thirds smaller than the old pole. I'd like to see them at the same scale so we can compare them directly. Okay, a couple of questions for staff, and then a couple of questions for Scott McCullough, and then I have a comment or two about conditions. Um, on the staff, what about the tolling agreements? Uh, can we know more about those? The way Scott phrased it, it sounded troubling to use the word secret. That, that, that we don't even know how much more time we have on these applications.
Yeah, Commissioner Hill, we'll, we'll start out there as a PRA request, or we'll, we'll start getting those documents to them. I'm not sure what's going on there.
That's not something that we can just be told right now? Trevor?
I'm not, I'm not aware of, 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 of what document we're talking about here, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll, okay, I'll move on.
Like, like as soon as he said that, you know, we made a march to look into it, so.
Okay, okay. Um, uh, and then.
I can add one thing too, though, just, just as a general comment, with respect to um, tolling agreements, um, if, if a jurisdiction goes beyond the shot clock period, it doesn't mean necessarily that they have to enter into a tolling agreement. It just means if there isn't one, then the applicant might invoke a remedy, go to court, or if there's a deemed granted remedy, something like that. So the, the fact that nothing that, that there may not be one, might mean that there are additional risks for, for a city, and I'm talking in general terms. I'm not talking about these applications or anything, but, but it does, it doesn't always have to be one just because a shot clock has been uh, exceeded.
Well, and I think in our case here, these go to deemed granted, if I'm not wrong.
Uh, possibly, yeah, that, that would be the risk.
Okay, um, uh, for Richard or Tyler, the adjacent owner with the house that we just spoke about briefly, they did receive notice, right? Because they're not there, but that, do we know they were notified?
Yeah, it goes out to all the owners and occupants within a five hundred foot radius, so them being the property owners of the parcel, they were notified at their, at their current address.
And you, and you, you did, you heard nothing from them, apparently, so, okay.
We did, we did not.
Okay, so for Scott McCullough, if we could pull him in here, a question or two. Um, he wrote that the, the, the Canaan Doom project is not on PCH. So Resolution twenty six five and former Malibu Section seventeen forty-six dot zero six zero prohibit projects within six hundred feet of any other telecommunications facility. And that we don't have any evidence that these facilities are or aren't within six hundred feet. And so his argument therefore is that they failed their burden of proof on that. Richard had framed the, is, 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 well, maybe this question for Trevor, actually. Is, is he right about that? That those, that we, we're not on PCH now, so we need to be showing that we're not within six hundred feet of another facility?
I'm.
Tyler, what's our rule?
I'm sorry. So yeah, um, I guess what you said, Commissioner, was correct. Uh, they didn't provide evidence of another facility within six hundred feet. So what I did, I didn't check the, the general area, I didn't go out there and look within six hundred feet, but all the, all the properties within six hundred feet are residential, so they would have had to have a CUP, which I didn't see any. And then along Canaan Doom Road, there was none within a six hundred foot radius along Canaan Doom. So uh, to my best guess, there, there, there's, without fully saying that there's a, one on a residential property out there, which we, we don't have a permit for, there is no other facility within six hundred feet.
Okay, so, and then uh, he mentioned also that on PCH, we don't have to prove need, but this isn't on PCH, so Verizon would need to prove need for this one? Is that accurate?
So yeah, again, so the, this clear need is only mentioned in a few areas of the, of the code, of the, of the, the standards that apply, and the clear need has historically been demonstrated with the coverage maps. And so um, that's only for certain things. So if they're with, within five hundred feet of a park or playground, they have to demonstrate a clear need. If they're within six hundred feet of another facility, have to demonstrate a clearing. The clear need is not required for every application, only if they're within the vicinity, as mentioned.
Okay, I, I did mention that I wanted to ask Scott those, and then we didn't let him in. I sort of feel an ethical compunction to give him a minute or half a minute to respond to any of that.
You can ask, you can ask him a specific question. Uh, if you open up Scott's microphone, please.
Yeah. Scott, are you there? Can, can you speak to the, the point of whether they need to prove clear need here? Your argument that they haven't?
Well, my recollection is they're seeking a waiver here in order to once again have a, a taller pole. In that instance, under the old ordinance, there's a clear need requirement.
Okay, that's good to hear. I'm gonna keep moving forward here, because I know we're getting late. Uh, my last comment, for, this is for everybody really, is about the um, the backup battery situation. And it seems to me like this is in a relatively strategic spot for the fire department when they're running with their iPads and wanting to get good Wi-Fi and um, I know they've mentioned to us in the past how they like more poles and more, more data access. So that strikes me that this is a site that, that, two things. One, it should have a backup battery that goes a long time, because this is gonna be helpful for access up Canaan and maybe along the highway there. And two, can we condition that the backup battery put, be put underground for safety? That's, that's just something I'm putting out here for discussion. Better, longer hours and underground.
May I comment?
Yeah, I don't think anybody is gonna say, yeah, no, I want shorter hours. I mean, obviously, the, you know, six days, six days is my minimum, all right?
So, but, but. We, we last heard, when we heard numbers, we, we, and I was thinking, oh, they're gonna tell us it maybe lasts forty-eight hours or something. They said, oh, it'll last an hour or two. I don't think, I don't think that's.
But let me ask if it's necessary. Uh, and I'm not a whiz at this, but as I understand, cells are cells and they interconnect. So if the cell that's passing on to this cell doesn't have a backup battery, you're getting past nothing, so you have no reason to be able to transmit um, data. And you may have some backhaul maybe, but um.
Well, that gets back.
Wouldn't your whole, wouldn't your whole cell system need to have the same backup for, or at least the nodes? For it to operate? It doesn't do any good, uh, my understanding is it doesn't do any good to have one cell out there cranking away for six hours if all the other ones are dead.
I don't think we're known enough to answer that, but it goes back to my comment earlier in the evening that we do need some kind of report about backup batteries and how they're distributed throughout Malibu and how we're gonna get what we need, because right now we're going through this sort of ad hoc thing. We don't even know how long the battery on this one lasts. That hasn't been mentioned. Um, we, we should, we should have, even if it's not provided by Verizon, we should have at least our own schema that's, that suggests, whatever we need, three days, five days, I don't know, that uh, when we're looking at these applications individually, we can say, yeah, this, this fits and this looks like it'll, it'll help, you know, connect the dots in some vision of what we think we need for batteries.
Could I ask Daisy if I have a semi-right understanding of how cells work?
Who are you asking?
Daisy, I assume she would know, or?
Uh, open up Daisy's, open up Daisy's microphone, please, Catherine.
Yeah, Daisy, the question is, if one cell has six hours backup and the surrounding cells don't have any backup, does that cell still work?
Well, okay, it, it doesn't quite work that way. Um, so um, for every site, you know, in a perfect world, you know, we'd like, you know, backup solutions for every single one, right? But unfortunately, like with right-of-way sites, part of our challenge is space in the right-of-way. Um, the type of battery um, that would be allowed by the jurisdiction, there's other, just among others, those are just a couple of reasons. Um, but as far as backing up each cell site, um, just if a power is out in one certain area, then that site and everything in that area where power is out will be out. So if there's no backup battery or no generator at that site, as you know with our macros, we have generators that um, last for longer. Um, so if there's no generator or backup battery for that one site where the power is out, then that site will be out. So right now, what we have done with this backup battery unit, the small unit that we proposed, is actually a brand-new thing that we worked up and engineered for, for her Malibu at Malibu's request. Um, small cells traditionally do not have backup units that way. And we engineered this specifically for Malibu because there was no backup before, and now we're proposing backup battery that will go at least a couple of hours that would allow first responders to go there. Um, you know, and that's, that's kind of the concept behind it. So just like anything else, you know, as technology advances, then we do, you know, the best we can to provide even more. But at the moment, that's what we have.
If we said we need a battery that will last a day or two, surely there, there's a way to make that, to wire that up and put it in a box, right?
Uh, you, you're asking for a generator, essentially. Um, and if you, if, if the commission wants, you know, a generator to be installed in the public right-of-way, there's a lot of feasibility that has to go into that as far as studying type of generators, size of generators, um, space in the right-of-way. And there's all those considerations that we'd have to take into consider, uh, into account. And that will give you um, a similar redundancy that a macro site would. Um, so that's, that's pretty much, you know, what, what's.
Daisy, how much, uh, what's the power draw on one of these cells?
Um, I'd have to defer to Todd and Zach, but I think it's like thirty watts or less. Um, Zach, are you still on? I don't know if you're on, um, he's. Or is?
Daisy, is this something a solar panel can handle?
Sorry?
Recharging with a solar panel to keep the battery charged?
Um, that's something perhaps, um, we didn't engineer it that way, but you know, it's an idea, um, you know, to, to perhaps supplement. But then if you add panels to a location, then we consider additional weight on the pole. So we'd have to restructure the structures and also make sure that we still comply with California two ninety-five, as far as that goes.
I wonder if there's a way to structure this so that as we, with this and as we move forward, we can accommodate the technological advances that are happening with batteries right now and with solar panels. In terms of, maybe what Daisy's saying is, it, it's not practical to have that, but can we condition this? So when they do the maintenance or reinstall something a year or two from now, maybe it is, there is some standard they can meet in terms of having sufficient backup battery at that point in, that, that fits in the right-sized box, or I, I, I don't know what the criteria would be, but I feel like we're locking ourselves into a standard right now in a field of technology that's moving quickly, and a year or two from now, it might be easy if we had only foreseen it now.
That's right, unfortunately, we're.
Remember, you have to remember that you're typically talking about lithium-ion batteries that have a fire safety inherent problem. So you're adding, you're adding something that, try to put out a Tesla if it lights on fire.
It would, it would be difficult, because we're granting or denying coastal development permits. Um, it's difficult to grant a permit and say, oh, by the way, you know, we may yank your permit in a year if you don't come back and do this and that. It's not.
If, if there's a language that says you must use best or most advanced technologies available or something. Most efficient, safest, or I don't know.
Todd?
Yes, uh, just to answer your question, it's a thirty amp draw.
Thirty amp, that's right, okay. Now, that's pretty heavy. All right.
Um, Craig, you also have to remember that there's probably millions of these. So if you say, well, as soon as the technology comes out, we want it. Well, you might have five hundred thousand cities ahead of you.
Well, yeah, I, I, it, it seems to me that this is, you know, obviously, this is, this is a huge issue. I mean, uh, I mean, I, it, I, I'd be willing to, to, well, nothing, but, but it's a huge issue, but it seems to me that it's gotta be part of an ongoing conversation between the city and the utilities as we move forward. And I, I don't think that we can, I don't think we can solve it, uh, but, 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 but the city has to maintain the pressure and maintain uh, the relationship with, with uh, with all of the utilities. Yeah, uh, I, I just, I, if I saw a way around it, I would be happy to suggest it, but I can't see any way around it.
All right, thank you.
Um, okay, so um, are we at the point where we can, John?
I'd like to move the item with the addition of the language we had in the prior item on uh, Condition thirty-one, I guess, and there was some other thing Trevor may remember that we wanted to continue.
Yep, there was the issue where we needed to, uh, we're not in, we're not in the public right-of-way on PCH, so uh, it's not, it's no longer a Caltrans issue, it's a, it's a city issue. Uh, and Trevor?
I would recommend to have Tyler put up the recommended changes slide that he had from the last item, and then we can um, orally modify the, the Caltrans condition, but accept those conditions. And then the two changes I believe that you want to move over, that you made to the last one, were to add semi-annual to Condition twenty-three for the inspections, and on Condition thirty-one to add the sentence, this deadline may be extended by the planning director for due cause.
Right.
The Caltrans one, the Caltrans one should already be switched. We already switched to Public Works for this one.
Were there any, were your changes that you proposed for the last item, are those already integrated into the, so there's no additional changes needed by staff? It was just on that item you needed to make the changes?
Just the ones Commissioner Mazza wanted, twenty-three and thirty-one from the last one.
Okay.
Okay, so can we move forward then? You need to see this, you need to see the slide?
Trevor? You, the slide, the slide was, uh, because those, he's already updated this.
Those, those same conditions apply to this one.
All right, Craig?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I want to just say why I'm gonna vote no again. It's because I, I don't think they've met the burden of proof on the need or on the, the safety and whether, and as Scott McCullough pointed out, whether it complies with all code. We just, we don't know that. So uh, as a matter of encouraging them to dot their i's and cross their t's, that's, that's why I'm voting this way now.
You know, I, let me just say this about that. If, if, if they, if they fully designed this thing, fully engineered it, brought it in and said, here it is, and gave it to me, I wouldn't have any idea of what it meant. Uh, I, I would have to turn to building and safety and say, here, look at this and tell me. I mean, I, I, it, it just seems to me that we're, the, the issue is the order in which things get done, but I don't, I don't, that. We can, we can view it in different ways. Um, I think we've got a motion. Do we got a, a second?
Who is, whose motion was it? Who is, whose motion was it?
Uh, it was John's motion. David's second.
The, the motion was staff's recommendation and then adding semi-annual to Condition 23. And adding the sentence, this deadline may be extended by the planning director for due cause to Condition 31. Does that accurately reflect your motion?
Yes.
All right, Kathleen, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
You're, you're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes that item. Uh, was that your, your motion, John? I'll second it. Kathleen, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
This is a motion to, uh, what is it? Yes, yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Oh, I guess, yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Uh, yes, but is there some way we can hang on to part of the reports that have been already issued and save a forest or two and not throw this all away and then get it again a week from now or two weeks from now?
Uh, that sounds like a good idea to me. Uh, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be that long. I'm still got reports from the, from the Jewish center sitting here in my office because that was supposed to be coming back to us and never did. So, yeah, okay, so.
We'll have to at least get the, uh, the title pages, cause they're dated wrong.
And we have to change the resolution dates and a few other recitals.
Okay, never mind.
You can distribute that electronically and make it, it just, you can halve the changes to that.
There you're picking.
We could do it digitally, uh, you know, unless someone requests a hard copy. And then that way, perhaps the only thing you have for the meeting on the thirtieth, that would be a, a hard copy of the hotel.
That's a great idea. We are adjarring, folks.
Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.